September 23rd, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Spanish translation tonight, I don't...
Yes, we believe we have Vivian Rodriguez coming, but in her absence at this point, since we're starting earlier tonight, I'm going to have Michael Gonzalez introduce himself as our translator.
Buenas noches, gracias por estar aquí, de parte de la mesa de activas, si necesitan ayuda traducir, por favor levanten la mano y les vamos a ayudar, gracias.
Gracias. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired. Announcements of closed session, B1. It was voted to accept the late liability claim, and it was a motion by Harder, second by Parker, and it passed 5-0. B2, to deny the liability claim, it was a motion by Harder...
I'm sorry, okay, gotcha.
Okay, second by Parker, did I do anything wrong? It passed 5-0 to deny the liability claim. On B3, also, the motion was to deny the liability claim, motion by Harder, second by Parker, passed 5-0, and it passed, that is, to deny the liability claim. And there is no other action. Okay, are we all right?
Yes.
Yes.
If it was B2, was it motion by Harder?
They're all three, Harder and then Parker, yes. Okay, and we're on to C5.
Move to accept with appreciation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noticed, how much is in this, this is only two weeks since $281,000, thank you, community.
This is incredible, especially Cesar Chavez Foundation and the Franklin Elementary School Foundation, I'm sorry, Santa Barbara Foundation on behalf of both of those schools.
Thank you. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, recognitions.
Well, we did have a presentation scheduled for this evening, but it's been preempted by a sick child, so let me introduce the board members, or the board candidates who are present tonight. We have Jackie Enda, we have Ed Heron, we have Kate Smith, and we have Annette Cordero. That's it.
Glad to have you. A sick child will never...
Maybe you'll tell us later what actually, what's going on, but that's okay.
There wasn't one of mine there. This is only a head bump, this shows me why my grandsons have permanent bumps on their heads.
Superintendent's report.
Well, we finally have a state budget, hooray. The governor signed the state budget on September 23rd, 85 days after the date it was due, as set by the state constitution. The budget does not address the structural imbalance between revenues and expenditures at the state level. It does provide a very small increase in revenue over what the districts projected at the time of our budget adoption, and in addition to the restoration of cuts made to several categorical programs, the state's budget provides the districts with a very small 0.68 percent, less than 1 percent, cost of living adjustment to its revenue limit, which is a source of funding for most of the district's general purpose expenditures. By not addressing the structural imbalance between revenue and expenditure at the state level, this poses a severe problem for probably years to come. There are already significant concerns that the revenue estimates were overstated in the state's budget, and the state could be looking at a significant deficit, significant deficit going into next year. As a result, the possibility of mid-year cuts to education is very real, as we have seen in the past, and it is likely that another protracted budget stalemate is in store for our districts again this year. Dennis Myers of Casbo recommends that schools, quote, "need to hunker down over the next 24 months, limiting long-term commitments and protecting cash." So, we need to pay heed. And now the good news.
Can I ask a question about the bad news first?
Oh, certainly.
It just occurs to me, there's really a question for Mr. Smith. With all that's going on nationally in the credit markets, does that have implications for us, and I'm thinking particularly about our unfunded liability?
You know where it has the most significant implications would be when we go to market, either to sell general obligation bonds or issue transnotes, because the credit markets and basically the finance markets, public finance markets, there's interrelationships there. And I'll give you a good example, I have an underwriter friend who used to work for Payne Weber, and now he works for Piper Jaffray, and I said, "Well, what happened?" He said, "Well, Payne Weber had too much in, you know, the mortgage sector, and when it failed, it spilled over to the public finance side, and so they closed down their whole shop in terms of public agency." So there is some inner relationships. Relative to our unfunded liability, I don't really see an issue there, you know, unless we were going to try and issue bonds to cover that, which I, there are some districts that are doing that, and that's not my recommendation. But I think the volatility of the credit market could have implications if we were going to issue any kind of debt. So it might have implications for our next transition, next year, if things don't settle down.
And of course, it may have implications for the state budget and state revenues this next year.
Yeah, and I think that's a good, that's a good point, too, where it does have implications, is you know, the state was on the verge of running out of cash, so they were essentially going to have to borrow money from Wall Street to basically float all their obligations, similar to when we have cash poor periods and we draw on our trans. And so with the financial markets being in such a state of chaos, that could have implications for them, but, you know, as I said before, I mean, this budget's put together with, you know, the state budget is put together with chewing gum and baling wire, and, you know, it's not a good budget, but it's the budget we have, and it's the budget we'll be dealing with for the next few months until we get the governor's proposal in January, and then here we go again.
Thank you very much.
And now for the good news. Three Dos Pueblos High School students competed Saturday in the national qualifying competition in San Gabriel for the U-High School Mathematics Award. Under the mentorship of a UCSB professor, Angela Dai, Carolyn Kim, and John Kim presented their own original research in the field of linear algebra. These outstanding math students won the national qualifying competition, and they will be heading to China in late October to compete in the international competition. Congratulations to those students, Angela, Carolyn, and John. We'll get them here in front of you. And congratulations to Nancy Tobin. Nancy Tobin, as you know, is our, is our library trainer for the elementary libraries, she provides a lot of service to all the elementary libraries at our elementary schools. She won three $1,000 grants that were received from Corwin Press, one each for the libraries at Cleveland, Harding, and McKinley. At Cleveland, the $1,000 grant represents 55 percent of the library book budget for this year. It's 43 percent of McKinley's book budget and 42 percent of Harding's book budget. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is on display in the reception area, or can be provided through the superintendent's office. I'd like to highlight one item in the September 12 Board Brief that I think is particularly significant. Over the past five years, we have accessed over $50 million in state funds for construction projects. That's a big number, and it seriously augments the bond funds that the citizens voted for us in the elementary district through I-98 and in the second district through Measure V. Dave Hetjunk is singularly responsible for this. He's done an incredible job of accessing state funds and has greatly extended the benefit of our bond funds. In fact, it added almost $11 million to the elementary construction projects and almost $41 million to the secondary construction projects. In total, we have received $51.5 million in state funds, and we are in line to receive another $6.4 million in state matching funds. Dave Hetjunk, our Director of Facilities and Operations, deserves credit and praise for a job well done.
And a hand.
And the public is invited to cheer the Dos Pueblos Chargers onto victory as they play their first varsity football game at the Scott O'Leary Stadium. Now, this is for the first time ever, this is the first football game ever. Dos Pueblos will host two varsity football games this fall, beginning this Friday at 7:00 PM, and again on October 3rd at 7:00. This Friday, Dos Pueblos plays Lompoc High School, and October 3rd, they play Rigetti High School. These two games will allow the school to work out the kinks in the stadium as they plan to host future games on the campus. And eventually, they'll be building up to those big rivalries between Dos Pueblos and San Marcos and Dos Pueblos and Santa Barbara High, when they will attract in thousands and thousands of fans. At other home games this season, the other home games will be played at Valley Stadium at San Marcos High School this year. And finally, we've placed copies of the Measure H-2008 and Measure I-2008 parcel tax fact sheets on the table at the back of the room. Copies are available in English and Spanish and are accessible on our district's web, and the website is shown right here, top of the screen, www.sbsdk12.org. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Excellent.
Can I ask a couple, another question about the Board Brief? There was a short item in here about duties of an in-house attorney, and I guess I'm wondering, maybe you could clarify what that meant?
What was that about? Oh, that was specifically, that was in answer to the Board question at a Board meeting about the contract with Fagman, Friedman, and Full Frost for an attorney to work with us here in-house in special education, and that was...
Is this like a permanent position, or?
Well, it's contracted for this year, yes.
It's, I think, I believe the parameters were they come once a month, and any kind of pending, you know, possible problems, the parents would come for discussion to try and mediate the issues, is that, yeah?
I think, Dr. Noel, you actually, on that, you commented on that was a good idea to fend off lawsuits.
Well, this wording is, doesn't sound like that description, and I read this, and I thought, wait a minute, what is this?
So it didn't sound like an answer to that question?
Sounded like a full-time in-house attorney, that, you know, okay.
Well, there is plenty to be done in that, in that day.
Can I ask one more factual, and I recognize this is not, we don't normally do this, but the superintendent's report, it seems to me, I know it's proper under the...
Probably the appropriate time, yes.
Under Board, under the Brown Act and so on, to ask questions of the superintendent. And there was one other, and this is just really a question suggestion, because you're phasing out the presentations to, in a public forum of the single plans, which is the only chance we have to hear principals talk about their schools and their plans, and I don't disagree with that at all, I like, I know your reasoning, and I agree with you. But it just occurred to me, maybe, if, would it be possible to televise those and make them available, at least to Board members, or to anybody who wants to come in and look at that? Because I still would like to hear principals talk about what they're doing on their campuses. But I agree fully with that the way we've done it in the past is not a very effective way to do it.
Well, you've probably seen that we have that item on the Board Agenda for Board Discussion at our next meeting. So next Tuesday night, we thought we would lay it out, lay out the options, and the big question will be, does the Board want any presentation from, from site principals, for example, on Board Focus Goals? And if so, do you want those in during regular meetings, do you want those at special meeting times? But, but we'd like to bring that back to the Board for specific discussion and input from each of the Board members.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comments.
We have one public comment, Kate Smith. And Mr. Smith will set the timer.
We're not related. My name is Kate Smith, and I'm running for the school board because I feel we're in a world of hurt. I think there needs to be a teacher who knows about educational philosophy, which has been around since Aristotle, thousands of years. We know how the children need to be educated so they grow up to be happy, healthy, and successful citizens of our democracy in the 21st century. I'm calling for a new school paradigm. I'm calling for child-centered, teacher-directed, and parent-involved. So that would be bringing the management of the school down to the school site level, and it would be slashing the administrative budget. We need democratic schools with democratic education, with restorative justice, and collaborative law. So that's why you've got a lawyer coming in every month to take a look at the parent due process complaints, so that you will not be funding Sharon Watt, who was funded for 10 years at $200,000 a year, she was guaranteed, and so anything that came across the desk was litigated, and it cost me $1.5 million. It cost you a little less. I'm calling for educational reform, organizational restructuring, and social justice. At the joint meeting on September 12th with the city, you heard Ia Falconi say that they excluded Dr. Noel. That's because he's a political science professor, and the laws of political science are immutable. When you oppress a distinguished, distinguishable, and specified group, they will rise. So the ACLU has talked about the school-to-prison pipeline. You heard Gracia Limas, the Pueblo Director, say that 10 students had been sent home for the dress code violation. The dress code had not been noticed, you don't have gang attire dress code at the schools written yet, and when I talked to Michael Gonzalez to ask if he was going to investigate that, he said, "Well, they weren't suspended, Kate, review your notes." If you are having a staff member send home a student without a suspension notice, the liabilities are staggering. So I want those students, and I want the El Puente kids. We can reduce and prevent gang violence by having good, engaged programs. Thank you.
Just a quick comment, we checked with all the schools, we're not suspending students for dress code violations. We are having them turn their T-shirts inside out, and school after school is doing the same thing.
And just for clarification, political science has no immutable laws. That's the only immutable law.
Why is it called science?
Well, that's been a debate for about 150 years. Well, they've only called it that more recently, I think, it's a longstanding debate.
Consent agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it passes 5-0. We're on to E1. The follow-up from last week, two weeks ago, was it last week or two weeks ago? The proposal to hire gang intervention specialists and approval of the pilot program to hire two outreach workers through June 2008, or approval of an alternate proposal.
We've had some discussion of this item at our, at our last three meetings. We have a serious problem in this community. The problem is a gang culture. Some of our students are heavily involved in the gang culture, many not, but too many of our kids are influenced by it and find it attractive. Many agencies and organizations in this community, both public and private, have risen to the challenge and are putting more resources into their work with at-risk kids, and we are thankful for their efforts. As we noted during the recent joint meeting with the City Council, we are thankful for the lead on the part of the city, but the stabbings continue and children are dying on our streets. We have participated as part of a community-wide effort to build a comprehensive plan to address youth and gang violence, prevention, intervention, and suppression. You heard the results of the short-term interim summer intervention that worked with some 80 students with known records this summer. 20 to 25 of those students are in our schools, and we need to continue to work with them. Others have gang affiliations, and hundreds more of our students are at risk, many of them junior high age, some of them fifth and sixth grade. With school starting, we feel a new sense of urgency to work directly with kids and their families to keep them out of gangs. I'm requesting two interim people to work with this year, two interim people to be hired this year while the community plan is being developed. They would be outreach workers, they would serve both in a prevention and intervention role. I would supervise them myself this year. The county education office is hiring people into similar positions right now, they've already advertised the positions, and I'd like to note that, that these people are, while they're in a similar position, let's see, what are they called, liaisons or advocates? Excuse me, advocates. They would work primarily in case management, and case management, as Dr. Noel had noted in his materials, is much more at the intervention stage, or even suppression, than it is at a prevention stage. But they've advertised at a lower salary range, and I have information on the salary range, if you'd like to talk about relative salary levels for the positions that I'm asking for, and apparently have a number of good applicants. They have not hired yet. I've been working with Ben Romo, the Director of the County Education Office's Community Education and Special Projects Division. Ben provided good training and coordination this summer. We would in fact be coordinating our efforts this year because one of those people would be working right here at El Puente, which is a county-operated program with students who are a little more hardcore than the ones that we envisioned at our junior high level. We have listened to Board members at a number of meetings, we've provided more information, and I believe it is time to move forward, and we'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Mr. Gonzalez is here in addition. Mr. Gonzalez has researched a lot of these materials. We have more information on trainings, I have specific names of people that I would involve in our community in trainings. We would, of course, be going out to other communities because there are a lot of other models out there. I don't see anyone that says, "This is the answer." I mean, it really has to be the comprehensive intervention program that's designed by the entire community and uses all the community resources in a coordinated way. And you've, of course, saw the structure that the, the city-led effort was going to put on this, but frankly, that, that plan, other than having structures for different levels of management and an executive director, isn't very far along, and it will take most of this year to develop the other components, the evaluation component. We want to make sure that there's a very strong educational goal and success element to the evaluation component, to be able to pull together the other resources after inventorying and deciding what other holes need to be filled, so that this all comes together in a larger package.
Okay, I do want to note that on the first page, it says we have 10 minutes for this. No, we have 60 minutes for this, so we're going to spend a little time, although I don't think it'll take 60 minutes. Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have, I've been less than content with what's, with the process that has brought to, brought this proposal forward. From the beginning, it has had the feel of being a done deal, which, which I've not ever fully understood, and that was evidenced by referring to it as, as a fait accompli in the report to the grand jury before we had even, it was still on the conference agenda. I've more recently asked about, it occurred to me that we talked about paying them more money than, than we pay teachers, therefore wanting to negotiate down the salary they would be paid, and that would require renegotiating an MOU, and I've made inquiries about that. That MOU, which is tantamount to a contract, has never been approved by the Board in the first place, and if my recollection of the ed code and the Board policy is that that's inappropriate, it's kind of like, what are we doing with an MOU about, about the salary to pay the person before this whole program has been approved? So it feeds my feeling that, that there's some kind of a dynamic that's pushing this forward. And then, then we related it to a plan that was forthcoming through the city process, a plan that was made without teacher participation, without community participation, and without this Board, at least this member of this Board, ever receiving a notice of a meeting or an invitation to attend. And, and then, at the same time, this Board is being asked to spend $133,000 to, to fund positions that are part of a plan that is not completely developed, and with input to which we have had no opportunity to make. At the same time, the program that was described in the city presentation was heavily oriented toward intervention, dealing with people, and by intervention, I mean, and I've learned this primarily by reading the Surgeon General's report, that intervention has to do with people who are already involved in gangs, and with kind of a prevention of additional gang activity, weaning them away from gangs, and in some sense, it's a rehabilitation model. And prevention has to do with reducing risk factors that are associated with people joining gangs in the first place. To me, prevention is an educational function, and the other is something that belongs in the probation department or a comparable, comparable agencies. And then I raised, then I asked the question, "Well, where's, how much are they spending for intervention specialists?" And said intervention, as I understand it, is really closer to their bailiwick. And, and I don't see any commitments, it's sort of like the school district is taking the lead on creating positions that will be performing case management functions that are, that are the business of probation-type officers, of social workers, that we have no commitments to match the... no commitments to match the contributions by the school district, to do any kind of cost sharing, and it's, and yet it's billed as a community-wide program. I find all this very troubling, and, and each one of those points. I'd be prepared to support it if I, I'd be prepared to support it conditionally, the condition being that we see some contributions, commitments from the other agencies that are, that are appropriately involved, and they're enlisted on that list, but I, and in fact, I'm wondering if, whether we might even encourage them to contribute financially to the problem by making a conditional kind of commitment. And that all has to do with accepting the, the idea of, of intervention. Now, my, my heart really lies with prevention, and I, and I'd much rather see us put our money into prevention programs. And we don't have a plan, so that's why I have proposed, in this little note that I sent to you all, that we develop, that we put our money into developing a prevention plan. And, and I just set forth some guidelines for it, kind of the parameters of it. That'll be long-term, it'll be school-based action, not involved in performing referral functions to, to other social agencies, but in, involved in trying to connect kids to schools, not with agencies, to connect them with schools. That, that there would be community involvement, that we would mine community experience and perspectives regarding youth violence, families, families and youth, and everybody would be involved, that we would learn from the experience of other communities who have, were not the first ones to go through this, that we would, it would be based on scientific research findings regarding youth violence. That would include reviewing the research literature, review of off-the-shelf prevention programs, and there are some very interesting ones. I recommend, for example, the Phoenix curriculum, which was, I was referred to it by others, and I also incidentally recommend the Surgeon General's report, it's such an alternative perspective on this, so that you see that depending on the discipline you're, you're based in, you, you structure this in a different way, and your priorities come out differently. And most importantly, there would be professional involvement in the planning process. Teachers, where are the teachers? They live with this problem daily. School principals, and I would add school assistant principals, this is their job. They know, I presume that there is a, a knowledge base out there that we, that this process did not tap into, and that, and that would be very, very useful in, in developing a, a long-term prevention plan. District administrators, local nonprofit agencies, all of those. And I, and I, and I think we should also be including our feeder districts in, in a planning process. After all, and increasingly we hear that the gang problem really starts in fifth grade, maybe if not sooner, and yet, everything that's been discussed so far has to do with intervention, and not just intervention with, you know, in, in a generic sense, but intervention with eighty-two specific individuals, only, how many, twenty-five to thirty of whom are in our schools. And, and I just, I have trouble thinking about paying for a process that doesn't go directly into prevention programs in our own schools. And I'll stop now, thank you very much for the opportunity to make that presentation.
Thank you. I saw, I heard about seven different items there, and it's almost, I don't know that we want to go through some of those items individually and talk about them individually, but perhaps, can I just list some of them, was the MOU, did you want to, is there something you want to respond to that in particular?
Well, we do not have a job description for outreach workers, and the CSEA is willing to work with this. In fact, I've provided you information so that we could have a discussion about an appropriate level. We do have two jobs that we do have board approval on, and they're listed in your agenda item. One is the coordinator of student community relations, it is at a range thirty-six. The other is school program liaison, it is at a range thirty-six. Range thirty-six would pay thirty-six thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars as a starting point, that's well below a beginning teacher. You said early on that, that you wanted the, the salary range to come in at a point that's below a beginning teacher, that's what we're providing you. It would go up to forty-five thousand four hundred eighty dollars. Those are the two positions that are most similar to this, and I'm still waiting for your action on this as to whether to move forward on that, and if you do, we'll go back to CSEA, they've shown a great willingness to work with us on, on other options, and I believe that we can probably enter an agreement, then we can bring a, a job description to you at an appropriate salary range.
Thank you. Another issue there, which may be more important here, is the, about the intervention versus prevention, and, yeah, you want to address that, or go on?
Yeah, I have some comments to make, and, and one of them specifically addresses that.
Go ahead, finish yours. Well, I was just, no, I was just going to address that myself, so I'll let you go ahead, go ahead.
And with respect to that particular issue, in, in a past life, I was a member of the board at COM, and I was board president there, child abuse listening and mediation, and I think when you talk to any of the therapists or caseworkers involved with COM, they would say that there's not a bright line that you can draw between intervention and prevention activities, that it, one bleeds into the other. For instance, if you have a student that you're trying to do interventions for, such as the students who were followed this summer, that your contact with that student and with their family and with their friends and their siblings, who may or may not be involved in gang life, provides a prevention function for those connected to that student who are not involved in gang life. So I, I, I appreciate what Dr. Noel is saying, because I certainly think that we want to strive to provide school-based, long-term plans and actions, but I think prevention is the ultimate goal, and we may have to engage in some intervention in order to get to that full prevention function. And, and given that, I, I have some, you know, other recommendations that I, or suggestions that I'd like to make, but I don't want to interfere with any other comment than anybody else wants to make.
Actually, I'd like to hear your suggestions, but can I add to that, was that, that we need, it seems to me we need something right now, and that is this, and this seems appropriate for the moment. It's not a long-term solution, and we need to work on our prevention ideas, and I think that's what you're going to propose, but maybe we also need to put it on our focus goals, figure out ways to, to work on that, and think about it more long-term. But if you have specific suggestions, please.
Actually, I do. Actually, one of the suggestions was going to be in the form of a motion, and I'm perfectly willing to wait until after we have public comment, but I would like to make a very fundamental act, take very fundamental action, and that would be to earmark the funds that are on the table for gang prevention and intervention purposes. Regardless of what else we accomplish tonight, I would like to put a lock on those funds for this purpose. So I guess I'm happy to make a motion to that effect, and I don't know if anybody wants to entertain a second.
Do we need to have it, do you want us to be more specific? I, I think superintendent wants to hear.
I guess I don't want to get to the end of our sixty minutes that we've allotted and have taken no specific action.
I agree.
So I just want to throw that out there.
Whether we need like a job category, a...
Well, actually, what I'd like to suggest in terms of that is, I mean, I, I feel a certain amount of urgency, although I fully appreciate the suggestions that Dr. Noel has made, because I think that that is the ultimate direction that we are headed in. But I think that we need to start somewhere, and I think that this is a starting point. Now, I am also very concerned about the amount of money that was initially indicated to be allocated for these positions. I realize they would be year-round positions, but I would like to find, to do something more in line with what the county is doing in terms of pay scale, because perhaps not only can we squeeze out an extra position, or two positions plus some kind of coordination effort, as Dr. Noel suggested, some kind of money to kick in with community coordination effort, some person who's going to oversee that so that we would make a contribution to that kind of a position. But it, it means putting a squeeze, as much of a squeeze on those dollars as we, we possibly can.
Can we ask what dollars they are?
I, I'm talking specifically about the hundred and thirty-three dollars.
That's actually down to a hundred, it's actually down to a hundred thousand on here.
I need to correct that, that's a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, well.
Because it's now...
In fact, depending on the salary range, it could be significantly less than a hundred thousand dollars.
It's pupil retention block grant carryover, yes or no?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I also think that if we move forward with these positions, we should begin the work of a steering committee, as Dr. Noel suggested, and the steering committee could work to hone these positions in terms of job, appropriate job description and training before we actually go out to hire, but there are other issues that Dr. Noel has raised, the gang curriculum. I would suggest using that committee to monitor the gang-related incidents that arise from schools that we're going to start keeping track of. Reviewing school safety plans regarding gang dress code would be another part of the mission, and the evaluation component would, would come into play, the coordination with other community entities could also come into play with regard to that steering committee, but I think that, I would certainly like to see that component in terms of, of moving, moving forward and trying to make as much of a comprehensive effort as we can on our part. I have a, a really basic fundamental issue with how we might be arranging these positions, and it's that we were focusing on geography and not on age, and I would much rather have these positions where we have some kind of junior high outreach person, if we can only pay for two positions, a junior high outreach and a high school outreach, that that person would be dealing with students who live on the west side and on the east side. I feel like if we do it east side and west side, if we divide by geography, that we are playing into the hands of the currently existing model that our students subscribe to, and I'm not sure what we accomplished by that, and, and maybe, maybe I'm missing something here, maybe it can't function that way, but it seems to me that someone who's doing outreach, who's dealing with families on the west side and dealing with families on the east side, would be able to create some understanding that these families and these students are dealing with exactly the same issues. They would obviously need to interface with their counterparts. I was actually hoping to squeeze out three positions, so that there was an upper elementary, a junior high, and a high school, but, but we may not be able to do that, but I, I'd love to hear some reaction to that. So anyway, that's...
Okay, Ms. Parker.
Well, I think just the issues you raised about whether it's divided east side, west side, second, you know, junior high, high school, it really points out that I don't think we are, we're done in terms of being able to say it should be step X and this is the job description. We're still in the fine-tuning process. If you're talking about a motion to simply earmark the funds, knowing that there's still this fine-tuning that needs to be going on, and without, you know, having a specific job title and, and salary attached and where they're going, I'm happy to second that. I really appreciate all the work that you did, Dr. Noel, on sort of this layout of the prevention model, because I think that one of the things that's been frustrating is realizing that all this time has passed, and the district's really been focused on working with the, in the community, and we haven't done the self-reflection that we need to be doing, and we haven't gone through this process, and I, I wish that we'd been doing it simultaneously, but I really think that it needs to happen now. I hope that it's possible to get a copy of this youth violence report of the Surgeon General for all board members, so that we can...
I think I put a link in there.
You put a link on, online, but it's, I, I took a quick look at it.
It's long.
And it is really long, so I'm wondering if it's possible, if we could get hard copies here so that we can, so that we can really physically at least look through a couple chapters here at the district office, I don't know if that's possible, but also to get, I would love to see us move forward and get a timeline in place for, for, you know, if it's a steering committee or some other kind of committee, so that we're, we're making progress both on the intervention side and really moving forward with the prevention side as quickly as possible.
Okay, can we...
I might, let me just give that reference again, for, for the public, if I can find it, the Surgeon General's report. Where's that link? Right down the line, okay. WWW.SurgeonGeneral.gov/library/athiefviolence default dot HTM. But, but, but you'll find it just by searching on gangs and the Surgeon General, and it is, it's really a comprehensive report, including, including a rating of programs in terms of proven effectiveness based on research, a massive research review, promising and not any good. Okay, so you save a lot of work looking at this program.
We have some public comment, can I go to that, or Ms. Cudary didn't have a chance to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I agree that I would like us to get something accomplished tonight, so if that means just earmarking the, the funds, I'm happy to do that. I, I do think that we need to go forward, and I think, Ms. Parker, I was specifically interested in your comments, you said that you feel frustrated that the district hasn't done more yet and more self-reflection, and I, I feel like, as I mentioned previously, that the young people in the community in the aftermath of the initial instance that, that sort of created all of the public awareness, were very concerned, they felt like something should have been done by then, and now here we are two years later, and we're, we're still sort of in the initial stages of trying to do something. So I, I definitely feel like there is an urgency, and I think, you know, I keep thinking of it as like, if you, as we talk about prevention, because obviously prevention is the, is what we hope to get to, but I keep thinking, Owen, when you have a, a bridge collapse and people are, are tossed into the water, you definitely want to go and say, how could we have prevented this? But you don't let the people drown while you're trying to do that. You recognize that there's an, an urgency in dealing with the people who are already in the water, and once you've got them taken care of, then you can, then you definitely go back and you say, what, how do we need to restructure our bridge-making techniques so that that doesn't happen again? And I'm afraid that by focusing on, you know, entirely on prevention, we're letting the students who are already in the water, you know, float by without giving them the support and attention that they have asked for in the past. I also just want to comment on the Surgeon General's report, because I do want to, I think it's a fascinating report, and, but I, I think that more than just chapter four and five are, are valuable, but I also want to point out that they, they also specifically identify in their own report that, that they have a sort of a disproportionate number of certain types of programs included in the model and what works, and they specifically point out that, they say, programs, is probably the, wait, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up. For instance, early childhood individual change programs are overrepresented in the list of effective programs. This fact is probably a result of the relatively large amount of funding allocated to the study of these programs and the relative ease with which experimental evaluations can be carried out. On the other hand, programs promoting change in the social structure, community programs promoting, I'm sorry, community-level programs, and programs that focus on environmental change more generally in schools, neighborhoods, peer groups, and so on, are probably underrepresented in this report. They go on later to say, the imbalance should not be interpreted as an indication that such programs are less effective than programs that focus on individual change. Indeed, there is some evidence that school-based programs designed to change the social climate of the classroom or school are more effective than individual change programs. So the, they themselves give a rating of the programs they find most effective, but then they give the issue a caveat that the reason they have determined those programs to be most effective is very likely due to the fact that those programs are easy to evaluate, and other programs that didn't more, that didn't earn that rating may be more, in fact, more effective, but don't have as easily reviewable and eval, as easily evaluated a program. So just to sort of remind us of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comment?
We have three public comments. Lane Wheeler followed by Jacquelineinda followed by Kate Smith, so Mr. Wheeler.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. There's school board members. The Santa Barbara Teachers Association is pleased that this board is stepping up to find solutions to the increase of gang violence, gang-related activities and that not only impacts our classroom, but also our community. But the Santa Barbara Teachers Association intensely believes that the school board is misguided if the proposed position of the outreach coordinator formerly the gang prevention intervention specialist is held in higher esteem, as is evidenced by the proposed salary schedule than teachers. Classroom teachers are required to obtain a four-year college degree. A fifth-year credentialing program is usually required and certification by the state of California that they meet these standards. And the proposed position with a salary range that's comparable to that of teachers has no such educational requirements. So, this is an insult to every teacher in the Santa Barbara Teachers Association's unit, every teacher in our unit, and I would encourage you to think long and hard as you establish those salary ranges. I've heard some very positive responses already today that you're looking at readjusting those and we support your effort in that regard and I appreciate the time to speak with you, thank you. And I have a copy of this for you.
Thank you. If you notice on page five, there has been some changes.
Jacquelineinda followed by Kate Smith.
Hello, my name is Jacquelineinda and I'm running for school board. I'm here in behalf of Esperanza to, again, bring out the point that our community has not been involved in this kind of planning and that with Esperanza, our 250 members, we strongly disagree on creating this kind of proposal for many reasons. I think one of the things that we haven't talked about is funding. This is temporary funding, it's funding that's been allocated from the past, which means that you're going to be funding something that you're going to run out of money for without actually creating a plan as to how to keep it stable. The other thing that you haven't actually mentioned, and I hear over and over again, is the fact that we need to save the kids that are sort of floating by in the water, as Ms. Cordero mentioned. We need to know that the community is doing its work. In fact, there's a lot of different collaboratives going on, like Community Collaborative Foundation. They have outreach workers going out to the east side and west side doing what you guys are actually creating to do. So, why not look at those extra funds and say, okay, why don't we fund something that'll get that community involvement, that'll create some kind of plan or strategic plan that the school district will have to be able to better educate our kids and reconnect our kids back into schools? Because the community is doing its part in trying to bridge that gap and try to save those kids. We need to work on prevention. And we need to work on making sure that those kids that are in our system continue to get connected to our schools, that continue to feel that success. Remember that the school district is not the only one working on this issue, that there are many nonprofits and not only that, many funders that are looking at this and this issue in Santa Barbara and looking at ways to fund it within our communities, within our nonprofits. They will have the funding for it because it's already established as a community need. So, why not work on our part and become experts on the educational piece? Because us as educators, we need to make sure that this piece that we have actually starts functioning for our kids. So, if we look at the models that were presented, which I went to, you have the enforcement, you have the community involvement and you have education. All of those pieces need to work together, that's true. But for us in education, we need to see what we are, we are faulting on so that we can reconnect our kids back into school, that's our focus. Community will start creating their plans. And they have programs and they have outreach workers that are already starting to build that connection so that we save that intervention piece for them. Our job and our funding should be directly funded for the purposes of getting our kids connected back into schools so that they feel more successful and we don't continue the cycle of violence that has occurred in Santa Barbara. So, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Kate Smith.
I support Jacquelineinda for superintendent. And I thank Dr. Noel for his research. And since Ms. Cordero has already talked about children in the water, with all due respect, Ms. Cordero, the school district is drowning some of our children in the pipeline. And that's undeniable and the ACLU has summarized it, it's on the web and I'd like to send it to you. Because this school district is a part of that and it is considered institutionalized racism. And I am incensed. I think the Gang Task Force is sending in people into the water who cannot swim themselves. So, I'm going to ask that you look at the Gang Task Force proposal, because I used to be a grant writer. First of all, Dr. Noel is right, they're using terms improperly and they haven't even defined their terms. But when they try to, let's look at page three, prevention. Training in strategies to prevent youth from joining gangs and prevention of violence. They're still not defining what prevention is. Oh, they're going to train the worker to do this. I'm sorry, I want you to train our children. I want us to teach our children. And for that, that they have to learn to do, they learn by doing. So, I want this district to teach conflict resolution in kindergarten as they meet in a classroom, as OAS does. Every semester, they start out by writing down what their rights are in this classroom. That's what they do, that's how they know their rights. And then they have a class meeting every day to discuss their problems and their conflicts and they resolve them and solve them every day. Don't you dare send in a law enforcement agent thinking that with the pupil retention grant monies, that they're allowed to go in and, and talk to just the gang members? Because you will not be allowed to use that money in this way. This proposal has said you're going in to target the gangs, but the pupil retention block grant says you have to deal with the children who are having problems and solve that.
Thank you.
Maybe I can make some comments here. I, I think there may be some misunderstanding about what this proposal does. This is very much a stopgap measure, it's very much an urgency measure. It's very much a holding pattern that would allow us to do some things now while this community process is going forward and while the comprehensive plan is being developed. We've been giving you updates about the community process all year, we've talked about this a lot. My sense of urgency is obvious. We are beyond prevention and the hope that we can get kids to stay away from gangs and the hope that we can avoid future gang problems. We're beyond that point, kids are already dying. We are at intervention, we are at suppression, because the level of violence has advanced to that point. It is time to intervene, of course, prevention is important part of that. We have 100 to 700, 800 kids who have gang affiliations or potential gang affiliations there in our schools. If, if you approved two outreach workers tonight, and we could talk about the level, it would still take until mid-November to get those people on board. And my urgency was in August that school is starting, we've got kids here, we're worried about what will happen on our school campuses and we're worried about what happens on the streets, might spill over onto our school campuses. I mean, we've already waited a long time. If you want to wait for a larger plan and you want to make sure other agencies are involved in the funding and you want to have the other elements fully developed, as I've said for a number of meetings now, just wait, let's not do anything, let's just hope no one more, no one dies. Let's just wait, let's wait for the community process. If you want to be involved in that process, that would be fine. Mr. Gonzalez and I are directly involved in that process. There are a lot of other agencies in the community involved in that process and let's just keep working with the community collaborative process. But I would like you at this point to decide, I mean, to vote up or down. I mean, either we put a couple of people in place right now on an interim measure on a temporary basis, or we don't and we simply continue with the community process.
You, your comments are not unlike Secretary Paulson's comments about the $700 billion bailout.
No, he told you what you should decide.
Okay.
I've given you a choice.
It seems to me it's the, there are other alternatives and you're drawing this in a dichotomous fashion. Mrs. Harder has suggested one. I suggested that I would happily support in this program as a commitment, very similar to what Mrs. Harder is saying, but I want to see something forthcoming from the other agencies. The kind of role that is described in this job description, the vision of this intervention specialist is a, this is a job that is done by other agencies and are much more experienced, have the training to do so. And, and I think that we should spend our money in a way that encourages them to, to come up with some money, very, very simply. That it's a community problem and all relevant agencies should be making commitments to, to a process that will, that will address it. And if that means hiring people immediately, fine, let's then see what kind of resources are out there. And in this sense, I want to point out, and it's not mentioned in this literature or in this proposal, that we already spend a great deal of money on related things. If my numbers are correct, we have campus safety assistants on every high school campus and we're spending over $500,000 a year on that. Now, I would, I would like to see if we can't restructure and redefine some of those jobs. And I'm almost certain that has not been rethought or reconceptualized in recent years. We spend $175,000 for youth service officers on our campuses and they, they are dealing with aspects of this problem and counseling students. We, we're contributing $40,000 a year to the Parks and Recreation Department after-school program, provide opportunities for after-school activities that help mitigate the gang problem. I'm not sure what we spend on AOK program and I'm not sure what we spend at each campus for after-school activities, but it's not as though we're not doing anything. And what, what makes sense to me is to put all these things out on the table and, and also put them in a context of what other agencies are going to do and a division of labor between probation, counseling, case management and, and the kinds of things we do on our campuses. And, and find a fair solution that is truly a community solution, not just a school district solution for a community problem. Thank you.
And that is what is being developed in the community plan. In fact, we have rethought community safety supervisors, we've upgraded the position, we've provided additional training, we have YSSs, we have fewer YSSs that are involved in primarily in alcohol and drug abuse, after-school sports. The city has certainly stepped up to the plate in terms of, of greater number and greater variety of after-school activities. I mean, that's a good example of an agency that we have worked with and is very cooperative and has helped a lot. Involvement in coercing other community agencies.
Oh, Dr. Sarvas, please.
Well, no, I believe.
That is, that is really a cheap debating tactic, I did not say coerce.
No, I think you said demand.
I did not say demand, I'm talking about encouraging them and about leveraging our money.
Bob, I believe you did. To get other public agencies and private agencies to commit is part of that community effort and that's something that we are pursuing. I, I don't think anyone's suggesting that that shouldn't be done. I mean, this is all about, and you had asked earlier, should we be taking the lead? Yes, this is all about the district taking the lead. And as a matter of fact, the county is taking the lead. I mean, we're not even taking the lead, we're, we're not really doing anything other than participating in the, in the community-developed plan.
Everybody wants to speak here, Ms. Parker.
Dr. Noel, what I particularly like about Mrs. Harder's motion was that it, it, I hate to say the word earmark because it has so many other connotations these days, but it sets the money aside as this part of the plan is fine-tuned, hopefully, within the next few weeks. But I don't feel that we need to say, we'll only go forward if other agencies are willing to contribute their fair share, because the funding for this is by its very nature temporary. So, we can see how agencies, other agencies respond, you know, it could be that the community plan ends up being something different and we can tweak things as we go along and we can assess it at the end of the year to see if it's been, if it's had any effect whatsoever. Hopefully, positive.
I didn't understand, is that, you're talking about a temporary, temporary funding?
Well, yeah, because that's all there is.
I envisioned positions which would then carry on, you know, it's pretty hard to.
Well, I, I see, I actually think that, I mean, my, the, the motion that I originally put out there and I, and I'm willing to withdraw, it was really about indicating to the community that we're serious about moving forward in this direction. But actually, if I could, I'd like to withdraw it and make a more particular kind of motion.
Since no one seconded it, go ahead.
There you go. Well, let me throw this out there and it would be that we, we earmark these funds for the purpose of prevention and intervention, that we move toward hiring two outreach workers, obviously they'll be interim or temporary, that we seek to hire those people at the county office of education ranges, somewhere more in that range, that there be a steering committee formed under the direction of the superintendent, that would include two board members. Now, I would think that you'd have to wait until after the election to put those board members into play unless two people wanted to take a temporary assignment, knowing that those seats would switch, but have a steering committee in place that would represent the board with the superintendent as the staff person and, you know, however that they wish to move forward with, you know, adequate representation from the community. And it would be the job of that, that steering committee to work with the superintendent to, to hone the direction of this, this is, this is brand new. And we may find immediately that certain aspects of, of the job aren't working and need to be altered, but also to move in the direction of prevention, you know, like I said, examining gang curriculum, monitoring gang-related incidents on campuses, you know, reviewing the school safety plans, et cetera, et cetera. And, and also perhaps engaging carpentaria and galita in the discussion. I mean, I think that that would be, you know, for the steering committee to decide what direction they wanted to take. I certainly won't be here to oversee any steering committee or be involved in it.
That was a long motion, but I think we got the gist of it. Do I hear a second?
Is that a?
And it's not.
Is that a motion or?
Yes, that was a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, discussion, Ms.
We still had a second on the first motion.
Ms. Cordero.
Well, I had actually wanted to make some comments before we had the, the new motion, so these are not going to be necessarily directly presented towards the motion itself, but I just wanted to go, to go back to the, this discussion, because I'm, I feel the need to remind. to remind board members that several months ago, we adopted the show program, the Serious Habitual Offender program, over the objections of community organizations because it lacked, it identified serious habitual offenders or, or potential serious habitual offenders. And as you recall, I did not support that program because of my concern that it further labeled our students and further put them into the, the juvenile justice system without providing any kind of a rehabilitation component, which is what we initially, when we initially considered it, we sent it back for further revision because we felt that, one of, one of the reasons was because we felt that it didn't include enough rehabilitation. When it came back to us, it still had, did not have a rehabilitation component, but the board felt that, at least, well, I won't, I won't speak for the people who voted for it, but I understood our vote to be that, that there would be other ways to address rehabilitation, et cetera, if we did go forward with the show program. My, I, I feel, I'm feeling a little frustrated that now, given this opportunity to do some additional, I think, good faith work in addressing the needs of our students in a more positive way, that doesn't put them into the juvenile justice process and attempts to deal with the community, with, with the students in a community and supportive environment, that we seem to be dragging our, our feet in doing so, even though we've now identified that the positions can be paid for out of carryover funds, carryover categorical funds, so they won't come out of the general fund. We would be able to do it for a year in which time we could assess the effectiveness of either effectiveness of the positions themselves and/or the effectiveness of having the district hire and, and train these, these positions. And I, I just feel like, you know, I'm, I'm going back to that, to my objections when we adopted the show program. I feel like we have, we have, we have the show program, we have the truancy program, we have so many things in place that label our students without giving them, I think, the kind of support that they need. And yet, we're reluctant, seem reluctant to support something that would be giving them that support. And I think, you know, unfortunately, the, the best way to keep anything from happening is insisting that it be perfect before we go forward, because we will never reach that.
Ms. Cordero, is there any, just a question, anything you wanted to add to Ms. Harder's motion, since she didn't have a chance to say it beforehand?
Well, I, you know, as I had said earlier, I'm, if, if all we're willing to do today is earmark the funds for it, I'd be willing to support that. I, I'd prefer that we took a stronger step, but I'd at least.
I heard a stronger step there, so.
I'm not sure, maybe I don't understand what earmark is.
Can we read the motion back?
Maybe I don't understand what earmark means exactly. Ms. Harder, what did you mean by earmark then? I thought it meant to go ahead and do it.
Well, as I understand it, it means to, I'm sorry, but let me just tell you what my concern is. But as I said, I'm willing to support it, that we are not specifically identifying these positions, that it seems to be, that it's earmarked for prevention and intervention, the hiring of, of outreach workers at a county range, well, with the, with the direction towards hiring workers at the, outreach workers at the county range. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I may have misunderstood, but I thought earmark meant to actually go ahead and do it. Is that true, Ms. Harder?
My initial motion earmark meant to set aside that money for that specific purpose, and I withdrew the motion. Ms. Parker withdrew her second, and my second motion, I thought, was, was more specific in that it was using that $100,000 of pupil retention block grant to hire two outreach workers to be overseen by the superintendent and a steering committee with one of the, well, the charge of the steering committee to oversee these positions and hone their, their job requirements as well as their training, and also to move in the direction of trying to provide prevention components.
Sounds like what I heard.
Okay, then can I just ask for a quick clarification? Because I'm, I, I miss, I think I misunderstood your, your, your second motion, because I thought I was writing it down, but I may have left out some, a word or something. To earmark the dollars for prevention and intervention with the idea of hiring, and so I wa, I didn't take that to mean that you were saying we actually were going to hire. If that's what it means, then I'm, I'm much, much happier with that.
Well, I think there's always going to be, until it's agreed on, the range is going to be similar to the county, et cetera, et cetera, there's always going to be a little bit of up in the air about it, but I think that this is as close as we can get.
To move as quickly as possible in that direction.
Can I just ask, is that clear enough to be close to the county, or it, we have, it sounds like there are ranges in our pay schedule.
Madam President, can we have a, I think this is of great significance, and it's a long, complex motion, and I would ask that we take a recess while it's typed up and put on the screen, so we know exactly what we're voting for.
Can't we just read it back?
That's not, is that so unreasonable?
Can we just read it back?
I'm just wondering whether we have it written out exactly.
We're making law here, okay?
Mimi, how much of it were you able to capture?
Well.
I think we're relying on the, on the video.
Yes, for the most part. I, I did capture that Member Harder wants to motion that he said, "So the funds were a purpose of prevention and intervention. We work to hire the two outreach workers and the Libya Steering Committee created with two board members, members and superintendent as the staff assistant. I would make the job of steering committee and the superintendent to provide oversight management as to the direction to take going forward."
Ms. Cordero, could you move your mic over to her maybe a little bit?
Would you like me to repeat that, or?
Was that? Did you hear? Well, what I was.
Pretty much where Robin has, yes.
And what I heard missing was the, the county, hiring in the county range.
Exactly.
At the county range.
And also that really referencing prevention as a directive of the steering committee.
Good.
Okay.
And can I ask about the, the hiring range only in that, is that going to work in terms of our pay schedules? I know we have certain jobs in there, it's slightly higher than the county's schedule, is that right?
We know exactly what the county range is. It's range 29.
How much is that, Dr. Sarvas?
It's 31, for us, that is $31,644 to $39,036.
And what, with benefits, not with benefits, surely?
No, no, that's the salary range. So, if.
Can we get the benefit, that's all, we have to pay the benefits too, right?
Sure.
What's that going to run?
It's sort of on this page here a little bit.
You could ballpark for a classified employee, health and welfare, and statutory benefits about another 25 percent.
Does that work with our pay schedule?
Well, then, can we make that specific in the motion?
Well, depending on, depending on the level the person comes in.
The range, let me make the range specific in the motion.
We can, although we need to negotiate it with CSEA, and that was the kind of work that was done a year ago in anticipation that the board might want to move on it, that you objected to, but that's what we would do.
Okay, so that has to be in that motion somewhere, is the, as negotiated?
Yes, and if this is out of alignment with the other ranges, and CSE, CSEA is, well, in fact, we ourselves would probably come back to you and say, you know, this pays less than people at this level, and we think it requires more skills in these areas, so, I mean, we can try to, to fit it in at that range, but I can run and get a list now, or you'll wait and see later.
How about not to exceed?
What other positions are at that range and what other positions are just above it and just below it, because any range puts pressure on other positions.
Well, presumably, this would come back, the actual.
The job description with the range would come back to you.
With the range would come back to the board, so we would see it before it ever moved forward.
Great, okay. Are we okay then? Are you okay with voting on it then? Are you okay with voting on it?
I'm okay with what Mrs. Harder just said.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that, I, I would like to see it in the motion, Mrs. Harder, if you would consider it, simply saying what we've said informally, that this is a one-time-only expenditure for the current fiscal year.
I'm, I'm happy to add that. I mean, I thought it was obvious from the source of the funding, but.
But not to the public.
I'm happy to add that, and is the second.
And I certainly accept that as a second.
Okay.
All right, then we have a motion and a second.
But I, I guess I would add the proviso that that, I think I said that before, but, but that, that would fall under the purview of the steering committee to be looking for future funding. I mean, that would be another one of their charges, yeah, okay.
The only thing left.
I'm sorry, can I just ask for a quick, quick clarification then? If we add that language, that it's a one-time funding, does, does that necessarily mean that we are then writing it into the motion, that this will, position will not continue?
Yes.
See, I think that.
Well, that was always going to be true. That funding source won't continue.
The funding source won't continue.
But it could, but it could continue. It's just something that'll come, what it means is going to have to come back to the board.
That's what I was asking.
Which we would want it to do anyway.
If we say, I mean, we're saying the funding source won't continue, are we necessarily saying the position won't continue?
No. That's true, but, but let me be clear about the, about the community collaborative process, because formulating positions like this may be at the intervention and suppression end of it, may be more positions that are appropriate for mental health, appropriate for other services in the community. There may be an educational component to this that does have to do more with prevention, that we pull into curriculum and into guidance and into success in school. So, when we come back with the community plan, this may look different. So, this really is just a holding pattern until that plan is developed.
Yeah, Dr. Sarvas, so you will, you will, particularly because I know we have talked about these things in the past, but in that Surgeon General's report, they take, they list, among all the risk factors that contribute to gangs, they're listed with all the beta weights, with all the, the, the correlation coefficients about how, how much they contribute to the gang phenomenon. So, you can look at it and get a hierarchy of, of priorities right out. One of them is a general social alienation, .39. That's, that's pretty significant. If we have a program on our campuses that addresses that, we, that may have some real cut to it. And you get down to some of the lower ones in education, only talking about .19, 18, something like that, so you'd say, well, that, that doesn't look like quite as high a priority item for us.
Let me also say, I know, I know we had some difference about, you know, forcing other agencies to buy in. In fact, we have an expert in the room in that whole community collaborative process, and Don Olson representing the city, and, you know, our discussion in the steering committee has been that there is money waiting for this plan, and we don't expect funding difficulties, although we do expect for every one of us to pay our fair share, and, and hammering that out is no small task.
I've been waiting to hear that, those two words.
What is our fair share?
Our fair share.
Well, and what's the city's fair share, and what's probation's fair share, and, and what should foundations be expected to kick in? But as we've talked to various groups, of course, there are other agencies that can barely make it on the funding that they have, who really don't have funding to put into this, but we don't expect difficulties with the exception of, of nailing down just what percentages and what amounts we should all expect to put in.
Well, as we have that discussion, I find the term fair share a little bit, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with using that term, because I don't know, determine whose fair share it is to help save the future of a child. I would, I mean, obviously, we want everybody to participate in this, and, and one, one entity, whether it was, whether it's the county, the city, the school board, the state, whomever, probably can't, or at least maybe wouldn't, fund the entire thing. And, and I'm not suggesting that I think the school board should just do everything because it would be the altruistic thing to do. But I do think that, that, that language is, sort of misguides us. It's not about doing our fair share, I think it's about doing the, what we can, doing the most that we can possibly do, whether other agencies do, do what we think they ought to be doing or not. Because I think if we, if we get into this, you know, this sort of issue over, well, I did this and you didn't do your part, and so I'm not going to do my part anymore, and, I mean, that just doesn't get anybody anywhere. So, I'm, I'm just hoping that we can look at what is, what's on our plate to try to accomplish and see if we can accomplish it.
Thank you. Well, my job is to move this forward, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you. We can move on to E2.
Thank you. Our intention will be to bring a job description back to you at your next meeting, which will be a rapid turnaround on our part.
Yeah, since it's next week. Lease of three classrooms from the Hope School District to house the homeschool Santa Barbara.
This would provide classroom space for homeschool Santa Barbara, and making the presentation is Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent.
When the board approved this program, obviously, there is associated cost, and one of the costs is facilities cost to house this program. Hope School District has some vacant classrooms. They circulated an RFP to public agencies relative to leasing those classrooms. Homeschool Santa Barbara responded with a proposal subject to board approval. As you can see, the lease rate was specified in the RFP, and that lease rate is also inclusive of both custodial and utility, so it's pretty competitive by comparative standards. I had a chance to review the lease. Actually, counsel was Craig Price's office for both of us, but I did catch that we didn't have a protective termination clause, so I got that in there. Actually, the, the original lease would have obligated us for 36 months, and so I said we needed to have something that, an escape clause in case something happened with state funding or whatever the case may be. And so that was modified in paragraph 24, early termination. So, now we have a six-month notice, and so at this point, we'd recommend that the board approve it. The revenues to pay for the lease would be generated out of attendance from homeschool Santa Barbara, the revenue limit dollars generated from those students.
I'd like to move to approve. Second?
Can I just ask a question? We had no, I guess the bottom line is, we have no space for them, and they couldn't have gone in the basement over here in Ortega because it's downstairs, is that right?
Right.
So, that wasn't an issue, okay.
And the way it's working out, I think we're going to have more clamoring for, you know, for leasing a portion of that space, and I think that, you know, no matter, or whatever might occur with the surplus facilities committee, I think there's going to be greater demand to lease that space, but that will ultimately come before the board.
Let me also add that we're currently leasing six portables in the elementary district. You know, it's not the case, I know we're in enrollment declines, and, and by upgrading some of our facilities and going to those that were ADA accessible and having to just demolish some of the old ones, we're down to the point where we're still leasing six portables and we're in increasing enrollment.
The elementary district.
Yes.
The elementary.
Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five zero. E3, report of the annual teacher assignments and approvals of teachers to teach under education codes. There's a lot of them.
This is an annual report you've seen a number of times before. The California Department of Education requires that this be heard in open session. You know, it seems to me we decide a lot of things on consent and give them a good thorough reading in order to do so. I don't know, I don't quite know why they insist on this, but that's the case. And Chris Robertson is our Director of Personnel Services.
As Dr. Sarvas said, each year, we are required to verify the legality of our teachers' assignments. And districts can approve teachers to teach courses under a variety of ed codes which are outside of their credential areas. Staffing secondary schools can be very complicated, and certain courses create some of those complications. So, the ed code provides several provisions for teachers with expertise and experience in areas not listed on their credential to teach in certain areas. And for the purposes of, of the audience, education codes 44256B, 44258.1, 44258.1. two five six B, forty-four two five eight point one, forty-four two five eight point one five A, forty-four two five eight point two, forty-four two five eight point seven B, and forty-four two six three, provide for teachers with expertise and experience to teach in areas outside of their credential area. All teachers under this ed, under these ed codes need the assignments approved by the Board of Education. And in addition, ed code forty-four two five six B and forty-four two six three need approval of board resolution. We have fifty-five teachers under this and two speech pathologists who meet the criteria under each of these ed codes. And it ranges from teaching departmentalized classes to coaches who teach a period for competitive sports, to multi, multiple subject credentials, being able to work in a junior high setting, and for a secondary high school, be able to teach at a junior high under departmentalized. So it, it ranges and varies for a lot of different subject matters. Driver's ed is also one of those. It's a very hard subject matter to fill. So we have certain teachers who, by virtue of experience and expertise, can be approved to teach driver's education. So. So it's, at this point, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teacher assignments under the stipulated ed codes and adopt the board resolutions for oh eight oh nine dash oh eight and oh eight oh nine dash oh nine.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, move to approve resolution number oh eight oh nine dash oh eight.
Do we need to approve the teachers to teach and then adopt the resolutions? Are those two separate things? Or?
The recommendation just says to adopt the resolutions. That's what I was looking at.
No, to approve the teacher assignments under the stipulated ed codes and adopt the board resolutions.
Okay, well then, do we want, then I'll make one mega motion. I'll withdraw that. Move to approve the annual teacher assignments and approval of teachers to teach under the various ed codes that are named, and adoption of resolu, resolutions oh eight oh nine dash oh eight and oh eight oh nine dash oh nine. Second.
I, I'm sorry, but I have a question about this one.
Yeah.
And that is that in most of the areas where teachers are being, are being assigned to teach outside their discipline or outside their credential, they are required to have additional units or something that indicates that they have some expertise in teaching in that area.
Right.
However, in, on the second page, or I guess it's the, well, the second page of the attachment, the second section down, education code four, four four two five eight point one, I, I'm not sure exactly what that means in terms of why they would be able to teach in a different area.
It's basically self-contained classes.
Oh, so when it says teaching two or more subjects-
Right.
For two or more periods a day to the same group of students?
The same group of students.
Means the students are staying in that, okay.
With that teacher.
Okay. And so they are, so they kind of need a multiple subject? Is that the idea?
Yes.
Okay. Then the other one is the one having to do with coaching a competitive sport?
Yes.
And I can imagine that, I would assume, the coach has demonstrated some expertise in that sport, and that's why they're being asked to coach that, and that's why they don't necessarily need the PE credential. But it doesn't say that.
No, I just basically, you have these people, you probably see their names every single year that we bring this forward to you, because they've had a lot of years of experience coaching this particular sport, whether they started as a volunteer, a walk-on, went to assistant.
So does ed code not require that we have to have any verification of any expertise that they have?
No.
Ed code does not even require that you have a teacher on staff be the head coach. It's our, our particular district policy that requires that a teacher be the head coach.
The head coach.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll point out that the teacher under there, I believe he's left, hasn't he, Mr. Back?
I believe you're right. Recently, he resigned.
Yes. Anyways. I heard a motion, I think, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five zero.
Thank you.
We're on E four.
In the case of oh seven oh eight dash nine two, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five zero.
In the case of oh seven oh eight dash nine zero, move to uphold the stipulated agreement.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh, there was no nays, right? Yes. Okay.
Sheriff, may we take our break now?
We sure, certainly can. Let's do that.
Thank you.
Break time. All right. We're on F one, report on the, the two thousand, two thousand seven eight adequate yearly progress and academic performance index. Yeah, we're on now.
These two indicators, the adequate yearly progress and academic performance index are part of different accountability systems. One is a federal accountability through No Child Left Behind. The other's a state accountability system. They are important to us. They show us a number of students who are proficient and above on the federal system, and the, the API index and rankings, although we don't have new rankings. Dr. Davis Hayden, who is our director of research, technology, and, oh, I'm sorry, evaluation and technology, will be making the report.
Good evening. Yes, we, I've got two charts to show. First one's on the elementary district. I have lots of backup data. If you have any questions about any of this, we can go to the backup data. In my comments that are, that came with the board agenda, I have one thing to correct on my comments. And that is, is that since writing that, I've discovered that both Santa Barbara High and San Marcos High will probably not be able to get their data corrected. And I can explain that if you need to have that explained. It gets really kinda complicated. But if we look at this chart, it is a summary chart, and we can go through it, and we can see that if you look at the very bottom, where it says average negative two point two, what that means is that we didn't go up, we didn't go down. We remained almost exactly where we started in terms of our academic performance index. And some schools did go up and some schools did go down. You can see that Adams dropped twenty-one, Caesar Chavez dropped nineteen, whereas like Open Alternative went up twenty-two and Peabody Charter went up fourteen. There is one complication with the API this year, is that in the elementary district, the, a lot of students took the CMA, California Modified Assessment for Special Education Students. And so those students got pulled out of the formulas. And so this means that the, the API has jumped all over the place in terms of its base and its growth. So this is actually, find the way you look at it here. It makes a lot of sense. But if you start comparing it to past years, it is a little confusing. So if you need to have that explained, I can, but it's a long discussion. If we look at the met to growth or not, you can see that we have quite a few no's. They did not grow as much as they were supposed to. And for the subgroups, it's mainly no's. So a lot of our subgroups went sideways. And if you go sideways, you don't make API. You have to grow up. It's a growth model. If I can just say one thing here, a lot of people say that maybe a growth model, I'm gonna have to get this higher. A lot of people say that a growth model is actually a better way to do the measurements than the No Child Left Behind, which is a step model. And well, yes and no. If you don't grow and you have twenty or thirty subgroups that you have to grow in all the subgroups, your chances are one of them won't grow. And so there is benefits for both models, and they often say different things. For instance, you may have a school that grew but failed No Child Left Behind. Or you could have a school that met No Child Left Behind and did not grow. Okay. We go over to the right and we can see meet the AYP. Now, this is now No Child Left Behind. So the yellow is No Child Left Behind. And you'll see for that, that we have a bunch of schools that now have a mark against them or are going into year three. And that's because it has jumped up another ten points or so. It jumped the target for No Child Left Behind, jumped in the elementary district from twenty-four point four to thirty-five point two percent. That was for a year ELA. And for MAPF, it went from twenty-five, twenty-six point five to thirty-seven. So there is a significant jump here. Some of our schools made safe harbor. Monroe and Santa Barbara Community Academy are two success stories. They cleared, they did, they, they grew quite a bit. And their percent proficient went up in almost every category. And so they managed to clear themselves from the mark against them they had. And they will not go into PI for at least two more years because of that. So that's a success story. A couple other schools went sideways and a few went down. Caesar Chavez, we were hoping for, but unfortunately, they lost ground. And so they now have a mark against them again. So that's it for the elementary districts, unless you have any questions about any of the, any of the data that's up there.
I'm rather surprised to see Peabody here.
Yes, and-
With a mark.
Let me get something. Well, you may recall, you may recall that actually, Peabody has been on the brink a few times already in the past.
Yeah.
And one time just got out because of statistic, statistical significance in digits. So that was kind of an interesting one. But if I look at what I have here, they actually had slight declines pretty much everywhere. So slight declines didn't mean, mean that they get, they didn't get out of it. And I have the details here if you wanna look at it later on.
Well, what I think is interesting about it is that I'm sure that we have all been looking at the details in the subgroups online. This is just a summary, the overview. And you'll see that the, even the gain, the, the drops, sometimes they, they, these averages mask even more significant drops in subgroups or, or gains. And even the schools that have overall gains had drops sometimes in some areas.
In some areas.
And some schools that made safe harbor, their scores were actually lower than schools that did not meet AYP. And so it's, it's, it's a strange system.
Well, they've actually added even more categories, especially in the secondary district. And what happens is that when you have forty different ways in which you can fail, you're bound to find one of them. And that is sort of the song that's going on here. It's, was it's fifty ways? So that's sort of what's going on in many schools, is that they unfortunately hit one of those ways to fail, and then it, it causes them to have a mark against them. Okay, so we can go to the next one, which is, oh, go away. Another question?
I have one more question. In terms of other elementary schools in other districts or across the state, are we pretty comparable or where?
I think we are, yes. One of the things that's interesting is that across the board, we have fairly high state rankings. And I don't think that's gonna change too much. So our schools are across the board usually above the state rankings in terms of how they're doing. But that doesn't necessarily help prevent them from going into PI because of a subgroup. And so we're getting caught on subgroups, especially the English learner subgroup and the Latino, well, actually, mainly the English learner subgroup, and in a couple cases, for the secondary district, the special ed subgroup. When we're starting to get to these numbers of thirty-five percent scoring proficient, it's really hard for a student that has maybe only been in the country a couple years and is still learning English to hit the, hit the proficiency level in the English Language Arts test. It, it's a difficult thing. So to ask that we have thirty-five percent proficient gets difficult. Now, schools do that. Some of our schools here are doing that. So it's not like it's impossible. A couple more years down the road, I think it will be impossible when it gets up to sixty, seventy percent. That, that's getting to be really, really difficult.
There are schools in California are doing that right now, the English learners.
Well, we have schools doing it here that are, oh, not the sixty, seventy percent? Well, I think we have one school that has like fifty percent in EL. It is possible.
I'm saying, we shouldn't, in that comparison, we shouldn't limit our horizons to only our own schools, because there are schools out there that are doing it.
I completely agree. And on the whole, though, on average, it's catching most schools. There are exceptions, yes. And there's no reason why we shouldn't excel or, you know, push for the, that highest standard ourselves. Okay, so we, any more questions on the elementary?
I, I think it's important to note that the Santa Barbara Charter School, which is not a Title I school, therefore has no, suffers no consequence of getting a negative nineteen growth. Just to note.
This does Open Alternative, which had a rise of twenty-two, and it doesn't.
The problem, I will make a comment on that note, though, because the problem with Santa Barbara Charter and Open Alternatives, Open Alternative, is that they're both small schools. And if you were to look at them over time, they're gonna go up and down, up and down. And so, yes, Santa Barbara Charter went down and Open Alternative went up. But if we went back a year or so ago, it was the other way around.
But the similar school score-
Oh, yes.
For Santa Barbara Charter has been at the bottom-
It has been at the bottom.
For year after year after year.
I, I know.
And they would, they would have long since been in program improvement had they been taking Title I funds.
You're probably right there. Okay, so any other questions on the elementary? Okay, we'll go to the high school decks. And this, this gets a little more complicated. So you, okay, we're up there. In this case here, we can see that we only have two schools that are not having marks against them or in program improvement. One is La Colina because it's not a TI school, not a Title I school. But it actually got its first mark against it, but it won't ever count against it. And then Dos Paplos. San Marcos now has a mark against it. And one of the problems with this mark against it is that this year, for the first year, they decided to use graduation rate of the subgroups to determine whether or not you are able to apply for safe harbor. So San Marcos, I believe we could get to qualify for safe harbor in both of the categories that it did not make, percent proficient. But because their graduation rate is not high enough for English learners, they will not actually be able to apply for safe harbor. So they're probably gonna have that mark against them count. Now, Santa Barbara Senior High is very similar, but their situation is a little more complex, because they actually made safe harbor in all of the areas that they needed to make safe harbor in. But the graduation rate was not high enough for those subgroups, so they weren't allowed to use it, which doesn't seem fair, but that's the ruling for this year. So Santa Barbara High School will go into year one of PI, even though it made very large gains. And its subgroups, I believe the Latino subgroup, made a fifty-point gain in API, which is phenomenal. But it will, they won't let it use safe harbor for that subgroup.
Can you explain that more? Because what I don't understand is that, first of all, I had looked through the AYP guide, and it said nothing about subgroups and graduation rates. So that surprised me.
It doesn't, and I called them on that, but it's, they won't change.
And secondly, you have to not make AYP in the same areas. And so graduation rate was not one of the areas last year. It was English Language Arts. And so if they made it via safe harbor, it should count.
We think graduation rate is both areas.
The graduation rate is universal for both areas. Brian Sarver is right. So-
Actually, I'm sorry, it's, it's more of a request, and that is, we got the data regarding graduation rates during the summertime. And I don't, I think it was during that period of time when we went for our long break. So we never actually had any kind of board presentation regarding graduation rates and how they're being calculated now, because it's a standard calculation across the fifty states. Am I correct?
Not yet. But they, this is where it gets complex. I told you it'd get complex.
Okay. Well, see, I guess I was requesting a separate presentation-
Okay, we can do that. We can go, bring that back.
Well, specifically, I think we had to bring back information on these graduation rates as, as they pertain to this. Because a related element is that if a student doesn't pass the high school exit exam by the point of graduation, then they're called to drop out.
Even though we had a number, I'm sorry, even though we had a number of students pass from the May administration, but we didn't have the results until later in the summer.
Well, actually, that, that did get counted. Well, actually, that, that did get counted.
Did that, did the summer?
Well, because these graduation rates are not for last year, they're for the previous year.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Okay, and not only that, for the, for the previous year, but we're actually looking at five years ago. Because we're looking at the dropouts from ninth grade five years ago. Now, they changed the exit rules two years ago. And as I told you, this gets convoluted and complex. And so changing the exit rules meant that everybody had to go back and change their CSIS data. And the CSIS data is where they're gathering this from. And so we made a huge effort this summer to correct all of two years ago and, or actually one year ago and this last year's data. And we found everybody we could, but we couldn't correct the data from five, four, and three years ago. That was already gone. So if we could have gone back and corrected that data, maybe we wouldn't be in this problem, but we can't. This is a long story, but I don't think we're going to be able to do anything about Santa Barbara High.
Can I just ask one more question on that? What was, I know you either had to show growth in, in your graduation rate.
Yes.
Or there's a floor. What was the floor?
Eighty-three percent.
Eighty-three percent.
Now, the reason why we can't show growth, which would have been nice, is that because of the exit code changes that happened two years ago, it meant that one year ago was the low, it, it, all the graduation rates dropped because of that. So the very year that they're using is the year that everybody's going to have the lowest rate they probably ever will have. So we, we can't hope for the one, the point one percent gain either. I've looked at this. Okay, so.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Is the API calculated differently for junior highs than high schools?
Yes, high schools have the Casey included in the API.
So, so, so you can't really compare APIs across the two levels?
No, and you can't compare it for elementary either.
Okay, thank you.
These are actually, the API, see, this is where API and No Child Left Behind, these are pretty stellar APIs across the board. If you get to eight hundred, you're basically not even looked at in terms of whether you're growing or not because you're in a safe range, that's the, that's considered to be the gold standard is eight hundred. And we're either at eight hundred or close to eight hundred for all these schools. And yet only one school cleared the No Child Left Behind, and that's Dos Pueblos.
Can you compare with the year before? Is, is there any change like elementary you couldn't?
Yes, for the, these schools, you can all compare to the year before. Their, their APIs is almost, I think every single API base is the same as the growth. So the eight, the eight fifteen was what the growth was last year, so it compares straight across. So the previous year, you would see the eight fifteen in the growth column.
So the five point nine means in fact that we actually?
It went up. But it, I, it's probably too few to do a statistical test, but I did it anyway and it's not significant. So it's basically going sideways still. You're all going to be getting a board focus goal very soon. And it has the five, five years of data, so you can see the charts and everything. So you'll be getting that pretty soon.
Davis has produced this again for each school, and that'll be part of our discussion at our next meeting.
I would find it helpful if you had put the subgroup scores up there.
You'll be getting that in the board focus goal, but we're talking about, if you start putting a subgroup up there, then we have maybe thirty pages of charts. This is it?
Well, no, I mean, there, I'm thinking particularly about four subgroups that are, or three that are interesting. And that would be three more columns in this table.
Okay, I see what you're saying, three more columns.
For example, I mean, to me, the reason I say this is because it's very misleading to look at a school-wide score in a, in a very heterogeneous school environment.
I see what you're saying.
If you're looking at, at, at Lock High School in Santa Barbara, in, in Watts, where the population is very homogeneous in terms of socio-economic status and ethnicity, and you can look at the school-wide score, that's not much different than subgroup score. Although it is different, but, but not much different. But in our schools, or in, for example, take Menlo Atherton, I've been, I've been looking at their stuff, they're like us. You know, huge, huge spread. So if you look at the subgroup, I, I'm just going by memory here, but I think, for example, Dos Pueblos for the, for the socio-economically disadvantaged subgroup was six fourteen, while the school-wide was seven eighty-eight. For San Marcos, it was also six fourteen, for Santa Barbara High School, I believe it was six oh-two. Latinos for Santa Barbara High was six sixteen, I think. But which, so if you just look at the school-wide, you don't get a full picture of the problems we have with the, with, with the subgroup.
I see what you're saying.
And on the other side of the coin, you don't see how well we're doing with the non-disadvantaged subgroup, which those scores are astronomical compared to these school-wide scores. So it's just not, I'm saying it's not refined enough.
I, I see what you're saying. And actually, I originally did have, and I've hid them, I don't believe this one has it. I had all that on a chart and it went out only about, oh, another, it went out to about here. And, and I, I did take them away because I thought it was getting to be too much data on one page. But one of the things I want to say is that unfortunately, you did not have the, this year's data when you wrote your op-ed piece. And actually, the six oh-two went up to, for Latinos, for Santa Barbara. Six sixteen, it went up to six, it went up to six sixty-six. They made a fifty point gain at Santa Barbara High.
What made that change?
Well, Mark Caprito could probably tell you a lot of things, but I think one of the main things that made that change was them working very hard on ninth graders to get them prepared for taking the Casey.
Why does the state, why does the state report?
Oh, the state report came out a few days after your op-ed piece. So you didn't have access to that.
No, I, I'm usually pretty careful about what data I use.
Well, I, I did give you a heads up before your op-ed piece that, that the elementary district is frozen in year three and that the high school district is not in program improvement.
Why, did I say that?
My, my question, Dr. Hayden, is why is the high school district not in program improvement?
Well, there's another very complex question. And it actually turns out that if you look on this webpage, it says no. But if you go further and you look at the grade spans for the secondary district and actually for the elementary district, if we had a K-eight elementary district, there'd be grade spans. But for secondary district, there is grade spans. And so they look to see whether your grade spans made it. Now, the grade span that made it was the secondary high school grade span, grade ten. And it turns out that if you click further down, and it's hard to find this, you'll see that under grade ten, there was four categories that the high school district did not make it. But every four categories, they made it for Safe Harbor. And they didn't use that graduation rate for the secondary district. If they had it, we wouldn't have made that, I don't think. So fortunately, the secondary district made the grade span and made Safe Harbor in four categories. So they escaped PI.
I'm sorry, so they didn't use the graduation rate for the district, but they used it for the individual schools?
Correct.
Further calling into question whether that was an appropriate measure or not.
I'm afraid that these are very complex decisions that are negotiated with the state and the federal government. And the state makes dozens of recommendations to the federal government. And the federal government says yes or no to every one of them. For instance, in the elem, for instance, the special ed group does not get any compensation this year. So you either make it or you don't, you don't get twenty points. And that was a negotiation with the federal government. And the federal government eventually said, no, we're not going to do that any longer. So they just said no.
And in many cases, we don't know until the data comes out.
Well, no, we don't. Many times we, if we know, we may know after the data comes out. Sometimes we're getting a week or a month warning, that's it.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're on to F-two, first reading of the board policy, thirty-four sixty point one Audit Committee and Revision of Board Policy, thirty-four sixty.
Well, we've talked about having an audit committee, we've talked about how it would function. What we'd like to do is to more memorialize how we expect to operate in an audit committee in board policy. So we don't have some guidelines over someplace else. I mean, we, we're trying to get everything into board policy or into ARs. And to make this presentation is Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. The board's seen this before. I've used this template as kind of an exhibit when we start, first started talking about the creation of an audit committee. This is our first attempt at basically memorializing it in a board policy. Obviously, this would be a Brown Act committee. And basically, in terms of the membership and the composition, it's prescribed in the board policy. This was basically being presented for first reading if the board would like to tweak it. This is just our best thinking at this time, and so we're presenting it for your review.
Okay, anybody have?
Where does it say Brown Act?
I think it says two members of the board.
Well, to be Brown Act, doesn't have to be.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah.
How many members of the board?
Actually, it says two members of the board, but I think somewhere else, we referenced it as a Brown Act committee, maybe in a previous agenda.
Well, if it's a board committee, it's by definition.
It's a board committee. There we go. And basically what we're saying, it should be in accordance with Board Bylaw ninety-one thirty, which basically defines board committees.
So in other words, the board would nominate or would appoint people? How would people be nominated for this? Or how would we, I'm curious as to how we would get people from outside our community to be on this committee?
You mean from outside the school district?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that we would try and solicit from the business community. And basically, we need to have a discussion about how that would occur. Obviously, we've done that with other Brown Act committees.
I, I was interested in this about a year ago and, and someone suggested there, there's a Santa Barbara Association of CPAs, something like that. So I called them, I got the executive director or somebody on the phone, and they said, sure. If you ever get interested, call us. I, I'd probably have to pay. Is this committee going to have a budget?
Well, I think the idea would be a volunteer committee. So I mean, that's the idea here.
I don't know, we'd get CPAs for nothing.
I don't have any questions about it, and presumably it'll come forward on an action agenda in, you know, one of the next couple of meetings. Just an observation, given the timing, that I don't think that we should attempt to put the committee together until after the election. Probably a statement of the obvious, but.
One more thing.
We'd probably do it in our annual organizational meeting in December.
My, I guess my one question would be, do we need to specify that it's to establish a volunteer district audit committee?
Do we have any committees where people are paid to be on them?
No.
Not to my knowledge.
No, no.
I mean, I, I think saying.
Seems like a conflict of interest.
I think saying volunteer somehow calls into question whether our other committees are volunteer or intended to be volunteer. So I think we should just sort of leave it at the assumption that all of our committees are volunteer. Because I don't want to raise the, the issue that somewhere down the line, or even with the current committees, that people should have an expectation that it isn't volunteer.
Do we have, I mean, I know that we have an overall committee policy, ninety-one thirty, board committees. Do we have any other specific board policies on any other committees? Like, I guess, because the Measure V committee is not part of board policy. It's part of the bond language. I'm just wondering if we actually, if this is the only one that we have.
Well, I think your surplus. Measure V committee is not part of bond language. That, that bond was, was passed before any kind of citizen oversight committee was required.
But you wrote it into the, you wrote it into that bond language, didn't you?
No, no.
It was enacted by the board after the bond passed.
Oh, you may be right, it may have been in the bond language, but I didn't put the bond on the ballot, so, yeah.
But I think you're right, though. I, I don't think we have board policy on, on how the committee operates. But we do have a board enacted statement. In fact, we ought to just take that and, and pull it into the AR or something like that.
The surplus property committees, I mean, the, we've, we've had committees before that involve many professionals and there was never any expectation that they would be paid. And in fact, having to fill out a conflict of interest form is often a deterrent, yeah.
Any other comments on this? Thank you. We can move on to F-three. Information on the two thousand eight California School Board Association Annual Education Conference and Training in San Diego, is that correct?
The board asked for information on this, and you'll see complete in this packet orientation for new trustees. You'll see a number of sessions on effective governance. And Ms. Arter, you probably want to comment on.
I actually made the request, and it was because when board members had attended in the past, it was on a more informal basis. And that's fine, people can choose to go or not to go. I simply wanted to institutionalize the practice of getting it onto an agenda in advance of the annual meeting so that board members could make a decision and the district would be able to allocate funding for it. And so that new board members in those years that were election years would know the dates, would know what the agenda looked like and could prospectively plan to at least attend the one-day new board member institute, should they choose to do so.
Which is on Wednesday, December third.
Right.
Nine AM to four.
But I just wanted to get it out there. We could, you know, calculate, you know, some.
Calculate a potential cost if, say, three board members.
Correct, and then allocate it from one year to the next, whether it gets used or not is a different matter. But I think that the opportunity should be presented at a public board meeting on a regular basis.
It's, it's professional development for board members. What categorical funds can, can pay for it, for conferences for board members? Is that Title II appropriate or no?
Want me to go to Berkeley for a seminar?
I don't know, that, that's a good question.
That's a question to ask.
That's a stump the chumps type question here. I like that.
There is another.
We will find out.
Orientation for new trustees that happens sometimes a month or so later.
It happens in January. And then also, there will be masters in governance classes opportunities as well. You know, I happen, I, I know some people, you know, choose not to participate. And sometimes the presentations, oh, you know, some of them are fantastic, some of them fall short, you're a little bit disappointed. But the opportunity to be with school board members from all over the state, to make those kinds of contacts, to create, you know, a group of people who you can consult with on various issues, you know, outside of your district, I think is really valuable. The, I just wanted to point out that the new board member presentation actually has a finance presentation from Ron Bennett, who is highly thought of in the area of school finance. So I think that there are some worthwhile opportunities.
Thank you. We can go on to F-four, which is a report on the revision to the board policy, administrative reg, on intra-district open enrollment and intra-district attendance and intra-district open enrollment priorities.
Well, this is something that we've updated rather recently. But we wanted to make sure that if we tweaked it at all, that we did it early in the year so that our parents would know well in advance what the rules are and we're not into that early enrollment period in, in January, February, ending at the beginning of March and having any doubt or any questions about any changes in policy. So Rob and Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, will give this presentation.
Okay, as you can see from the heading and reviewing it, excuse me, we did approve, it seems like it was just yesterday, but it was actually December two thousand and five. So that was the big revision on it. And then we've kind of worked with it and used it now for two years, three years, actually. The part that I've added per talks with the principals and student, the direct, let's see. Michael, your student services, that's right. We're forgetting all the names of these new departments, but student services that handles all the transfers, is that we wanted to add the part that you can see in three different sections, it's really the same language, that the last accepted transfer, and this is in the intra-district transferring, the last accepted transfer student in the impacted grade level. accepted transfer student in the impacted grade level will be the first to be displaced. And in the case of more than one student having the same date of approval for a transfer, a lottery would be held, will be held. And that appears three different times. It's in the AR, not the board policy, and it's under the terms and conditions sections in each one of them. So, it happens on the intra-district, and then it happens again on the exhibit that has the two mixed together. And I know that board members want to talk about the intra- and intra-district transfer policy, particularly as we move into getting closer to potentially being basic aid, things change, and we've, like Dr. Sarvis said, kind of tweaked things along the way and, and tried to make them work for us. But this is the latest that principals are saying is really needed to be added, to add more clarity. Certainly.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question just about that particular part? Because I noticed that in some of the, in one area, I think it's maybe two areas where that language is inserted, maybe it's just the one. It follows the, the deletion of the language, displacement of students with transfer agreements will not occur until the following school year. So, is it the intention that this would, would allow the district to rescind the intra-district transfer mid-year?
It would make it possible, or not, it would not prohibit that. It absolutely is not something that we would ever want to, to have happen. And we didn't strike that because it did happen. It hasn't happened, but we thought, you know, we better not bind ourselves with that because as people come in, and we've got attendance area kids, and we're looking at our fiscal impact and the capacity in the sites, we, we thought that's probably not wise to have that in there as a requirement.
It's harder. Just a quick question, having to do with displaced, you know, having the same date of approval. I don't know whether this is, you know, nitpicking, but is there a timestamp so that you wouldn't have to come down to a lottery between, I don't know, you know, two students or three students who, you know, have the same date stamp? If there was a timestamp, would that allow you to?
We've thought about that.
Okay.
The way these things get placed, sometimes they, they sit in a school, or they, at a certain point, first the transfers come to the district office.
Right.
And many of those transfers, the date is right then when we have our transfer meeting, and so a lot of them get placed at that point. And then they kind of trickle in, and then we do it at the sites.
Okay.
And it's hard to kind of make sure and monitor.
See, I was thinking that they all came through the office here, and you could do it that way.
After March first, they go to the sites.
Right, of course, of course, that makes sense. Then, question number two is, I'm sorry. Question number two is, what happens when, I'll say if, I won't say when. What happens if every single school in the elementary district is PI? And then how do you deal with, you know, number one on the priority list? And it's complicated by the fact that Roosevelt, other than some of the charter schools, is not a Title I school.
That's actually incorrect. Roosevelt is Title I.
Thank you, okay.
Washington is, Washington is the one that is not Title I.
Right, I just, I didn't want to point that out on the chart.
Thank you, I'm glad, because I know they've gone, we've gone all, and I knew that.
They're targeted. They're a target, not a school-wide.
Not school-wide. So, what happens with that particular item on the priority list?
We have actually spoken about looking at neighboring school districts. Ventura, or, you know, as, as districts get more and more involved in Title I, I mean, excuse me, in program improvement, it feels like everyone's going to be in the same situation.
I have some vague recollection that the, that the law actually speaks to this issue.
It does, however.
And I, it speaks words you may not want to hear, or they may not want to hear.
However, we're surrounded by basic aid districts, and to develop an agreement with those districts so that students could attend Galida or could attend some other district is next to impossible.
And they're under no obligation.
Exactly. Now, in the case of the non-program improvement schools, you are required to put portables in, whatever you can do, you have to accommodate your, you know, who wants to move into those schools.
My, my question was related to Mrs. Harter's. When we're, when you're under, when you're under capacity, but have got all the neighborhood kids in, there's some space, right? And that's now first come, first served for that space?
Well, the first, according to, you mean like after the, after the March first, when we let everyone in, we make sure that the program improvement choice, after all that?
All the obligatory stuff.
Then you may let, up until three weeks before school starts, you may let in transfers whoever come in, but you have to.
But do we do it on a, one sequentially?
No, it just trickles in, yes, first come, first served.
That's my question.
Right. And you have, we cannot, we cannot go over seventy-five percent in our kindergarten until later on, because we need to save room for those attendance area students, and in kindergarten, many times, they come late, if it's a first child or something.
And how do we define capacity? I'm thinking, I'm thinking not of elementary, I'm thinking of La Colina.
Oh, that's a tough one. Capacity is the space that we have, and then we staff that according to what we think we are projected enrollment. So, that's what we consider capacity.
Of course, so, my question's academic now with all three other schools on PI. Like, as you just said, La Colina has to take them one way or another.
Exactly, and we are very limited there.
Actually, I, I don't, I'd love to see the law on that, because I think that there is a capacity point where if there is literally no room, and you've, your portables are in, and there's no space for more portables or whatever, I think that you can negotiate agreements with other districts.
No, then you become one of those, those unsafe schools.
Right, exactly. And so, there may be.
I'll pull out the guidelines, and there's the non, what is it, non-regulatory guidance book, and they redo it every few years.
Did you catch that title?
Non-regulatory.
Non-regulatory.
But that's our guidance, yes.
Yes.
Because I know that at one point, La Colina, and this was a few years ago, they were having classes in the auditorium.
Correct, and we have OAS there.
Ms. Harter, did you want, okay, Ms. Parker, do you want?
I actually have a lot of specific suggestions and questions, and some of these will need to go back to principals for discussion. And so, I'm going to go page by page. On the first page, after the second paragraph, which adds, ends with the word district, my suggestion would be there to insert a new paragraph that says, "At elementary schools with attendance boundaries, additional classrooms shall be opened based on attendance area enrollment only and not due to intra-district transfer requests." And what I'm envisioning there is a situation where, for example, maybe you have twenty parents that are Cleveland-boundary, but decide that they want to go to, let's say, Roosevelt, because it's close by, and Roosevelt, let's say, it doesn't have space for a portable, but if, if they said, we know where there's, we have it mapped out, and we'll even pay for your portable, I want to, I mean, there's a reason why we have the attendance boundaries where they are. And so, I think it's for us, important for us to respect the neighborhood boundaries that we have. And so, that's something that I've been thinking about. And then I had the.
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, could you say again where you are inserting that? Is that in board policy? Okay.
The second, after the second paragraph.
Oh, after the second paragraph, okay.
Right, so, before the board shall annually review this policy, which is also good. Then I had made a note about Mrs.
Just a quick question. I, I want to hear all of the, the changes that you're suggesting, and obviously, it has to come to an action agenda, but I'm wondering if, I mean, obviously, it's not going to come on the next board agenda. I'm wondering if in between in a board brief, we could get a copy of it with the strikeouts, with the text edit.
Yes, but I'd also really hope that it would have principal input, too. That would be great to have it all packaged together. And then on page two, this is more of a question about the priority list. Our number five priority is, shall be given to siblings of students already in attendance in that school. And this is, this is really a question about English learners. There's a lot of research out there that shows that English learners do better at schools where they are in the minority rather than in the majority, and we have a number of schools that are quite overwhelmingly English learner. So, my, my question, suggestion would be to give, to insert a new priority in the list. And my, my suggestion would be, priorities shall be given to English learner students transferring from a high English learner enrollment school, greater than fifty percent, to a low English learner enrollment school, less than fifty percent English learner. But with that one, question for the principals, but also an opportunity for the board to look at that research. I've seen the research, but I don't know if all board members have, and I don't know if, if this is something that we want to look at.
I think that we should look at the research, but I would also say that, that based on the research I've seen, that the ship has sailed on the elementary district.
Not in terms of English learners. Well, no, no, I mean, it's true that we do have, we have a surprising number of schools that are still less than fifty percent English learner, and a number that are about seventy percent English learner. And so, the, the reality is, is I don't think a lot of students would take advantage of that, but maybe they should have priority in the priority list of being able to go to schools where there's fewer English learners.
Would we be attaching transportation, as much as I would love to, okay.
No, 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 no transportation.
I just, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you suggest where you would insert that?
Well, my suggestion would be between five and six on that list, but that's, you know, that's just a suggestion and a question.
You have all this written out, right?
I have it all written down very neatly, very neatly, and I can give this all to you. Then on, in the ARs, there have been so many issues in the elementary district in particular with the whole process of the lottery, and then when kids come in, and then they drift in, and then oops, we accepted all these people, but we should have done another lottery because now it. My suggestion would be to add a new number four, and this is on the intra-district open enrollment list, where it's talking about the deadlines and the, and the lottery. My suggestion to discuss with other board members and principals is a new line that says, as part of, as part of number four, late applications will be accepted until May first, and late applications would be anything after March first. And interestingly, like, for example, our neighboring district, the leaded union, only accepts applications until January, and then they're done. If you haven't gotten your intra-district transfer in, then you have to wait until a whole other year goes by, and a lot of districts are like this. So, late applications will be accepted until May first. Following the May first deadline, students may be admitted from the waiting list, and an additional lottery if necessary. However, transfers may be revoked due to excessive enrollment of students residing in the attendance area until school starts, something along those lines. My other suggestion on this would be number six, approved applicants must confirm their enrollment within ten school workdays. I would recommend that we dramatically reduce that to two or three school workdays, give them enough opportunity to get the paperwork in, but as it is, that leaves parents hanging. Then I have a question about your underlying in the impacted grade level, because that may, what about secondary schools? In secondary schools, you may have an issue, and I know that this was the case at one of our high schools last year, where with a hard cap at thirty-five to one, every, you know, space has been found for every student in English except for one. And so, there's excessive enrollment, and, and in English, it could be because of grade level, because you're going to have ninth grade English, but what if it were that the student needed to take geometry? And there are ninth and tenth graders, and maybe some eleventh graders in geometry, but the classes are all full except for one student, and you need to revoke a transfer because they can't get into their appropriate math class. So, how does that fit in? That's a question there.
Well, actually, the whole transfer and the impacted grade level, as you can see, came basically from elementary. Secondary's never had an issue that I've heard about, but I can see how that could play out.
That it has, it has happened, and they're struggling, and they don't want to send anybody back. And so, there, that's, I think it, it may end up where we have classes of funky sizes and categorical money being spent on smaller class sizes and so on, to try to not send anybody away, but it, it's, it has happened.
So, are you suggesting adding something with grade level?
I'm suggesting, to me, it's a question. I don't know. Ask principals, is there something in there?
Okay, but just ask, okay.
And, and then, you know, the exhibit might change based on some of the discussion that we have. And then moving on to the intra-district attendance board policy. Moving down to, the superintendent or designee may approve intra-district attendance agreements with other districts on a case-by-case basis to meet individual student needs. My suggestion there would be, and to meet provisions of federal and state law. And then, in the last bullet there, the superintendent or designee may deny applications for intra-district transfers because of overcrowding, et cetera. Or, my suggestion would be to add, or because the additional cost of educating the student would exceed the amount of additional state aid received as a result of the transfer. And that's referred to in another one of our policies. And I thought it would be good to reference the language there again.
So, that, well, okay, so you could be speaking of a student with special needs, or?
Not, that's not, I'm trying to, I have to go back and look at my reference for where it's mentioned in the, in the other five thousand series, because we were looking at this as part of the whole five thousand.
Right, right, because that's a really tricky part there.
Right, we have to be careful about that. Then a new paragraph, intra-district transfer applications that have been denied or revoked may be appealed to the Board of Education. If the transfer is denied or revoked by the Board of Education, the application may then be appealed to the County Board of Education, whose decision shall be final. And that, I believe, is ed code. And I'm a little worried because of some situations that have happened in neighboring districts, that we should have that in our board policy to make it really clear.
Interesting, right, because we use, as you know, CSBA templates for that, and it's not in there.
It's not in their template, but it's an issue, because that's ed code.
It's becoming an issue, right. Yes, exactly.
So, and that's the last of my questions and suggestions.
Thank you, very thorough.
Sorry.
I appreciate that. No, I appreciate it.
I'm very organized. And I will get you all this information.
Did I understand correctly? Are, are you going to give those to Robyn, or should we put those in the board brief for the, the board to look at?
No, I was just suggesting that before it came back to the board, and clearly, it needs to be examined by, it needs to be shared with the principals, but before it comes back to the board, that when it comes back, we see it as a text edit document.
Sure.
And in a board brief would be really nice, before it ever came back on the action agenda or in another conference agenda, or?
That would be good.
I have a few questions. On the second page, it says, "Once enrolled, students shall not be required to apply for readmission." Is that transfers as well, that they do not have to, to apply every year?
On the intra-district, yes.
You don't have to apply every, every?
Right.
But the enters do have to apply?
Absolutely.
Because people do change statuses as well? Okay. Okay, my, most of my question, questions actually have to do with timing, and I'm curious as to what happens as the school year starts, and you've got new people walking in the door, and.
From your attendance area?
Yes, from your attendance area, and then you've got these people that are, already go, starting school, who are enters and intras.
We try to do, occasionally, it gets, we get stuck, and what we try to do is do a really good job of outreach and finding out, I mean, every spring, a letter goes home and asks parents if they're going to be returning. When the kindergarten registration thing goes on, the packets and all of that, schools do different, they call it different things, like a roundup, I think it's the Roosevelt Roundup, and they get the parents in and the kids in, and they really try to find out every single student, if, whether they're coming or not, and if there are anybody out there. But there, it does occur that different ones, but it hasn't been a huge impact at this point. Not something, I mean, every once in a while, we'll, because we're twenty to one, so we will enroll up to twenty-one, twenty-two, and in a couple of our schools, that's really difficult, because we don't have a lot of moves. And in a couple of our schools, that's really difficult, because we don't have a lot of movement. But in most of our schools, in order to reach that twenty-point-four-four average over the, over the year to P two, we usually have kids moving and shifting, and we, and we make it.
So even if, what happens when somebody moves mid-year even, and comes into a school?
Comes in?
Yeah.
If there's space, we put them right there in their attendance area, but?
But if there is no space, then they get?
They have to go somewhere else. Go somewhere elsewhere, and Ana Hernandez is wonderful in working out that whole formula, and we try to get them in, if we, I mean, we want to enroll them in their homeschool. We let parents know that if they're not able to, we bus, we provide a bus, and that they absolutely have first rights to a place in their attendance area school, you know, if they choose to do so the next year. That's hard, though, because, you know, you're starting somewhere else, and we really avoid that at all.
Of course, because they may have several kids, and, or more than one, where one can fit in, and not, one may not be able to.
And the three years I've been here, I think that's happened once or twice where we had to move, you know, have kids go it's late in the year, and not, not before, not after P two. After a certain point, we can have kids come in, because it doesn't matter anymore, that, the class size reduction number.
Really doesn't make any difference.
Isn't that correct, after P two? Yeah, which is in April, so.
The general rule is you audit it up to P two, so basically you would never be penalized, because it's never reviewed.
P two is in April, though.
Right, it's late in the year, but we have had that happen, and we just have them go in.
Well, you know, we also think the landscape has changed, because we're not any longer in declining enrollment. And declining enrollment used to mean that you could run a class of twenty-one students up through the beginning of December, expect to have students transfer out, because we're in declining enrollment, and run the rest of the year at nineteen students, and you would still hit that P two mark of twenty students for that classroom. Well, in increasing enrollment, you get the opposite effect, and you get students coming in partway into the year, and there just is not room to, to add those students and still be able to get your class size reduction funds, for example. I mean, that's one of the caps, and then we have the other contractual caps. And it creates a problem.
Well, we have a public comment. Mr. Lane Wheeler. Oh, sorry.
I'm looking at, under enrollment priorities, priority number one in the, in the board policy. If a school just, it's basically states the, the right or the entitlement, the obligation by the district, and the entitlement of the part of the parents to have an option to transfer to another district school if their school is declared program improvement. This doesn't say anything about the provision of transportation, and I believe that unless that's changed, that that law also obliges the district to pay the transportation charges, but if I'm wrong, correct me.
No, that is correct, and I?
But my, my question's more, more direct. That's the preface. I can't find a counterpart in the AR about that. And am I just missing that, or is it? Doesn't say anything about how that, that, whether parents avail themselves of that, of their, of that entitlement has a lot to do with
Yes.
when they are informed and, and whether there's been outreach to inform them. And I think Lacumbre demonstrated that once by giving them sort of like certificates or kind of a piece of paper. Well, that was, that was a long issue.
That was McKinley for the?
That was on supplemental, that was on supplemental, yeah, that's right. No, but anyway, it has a lot to do with, with outreach. And it seems to me the AR ought to talk about that.
Let me address that, because the priorities are not repeated in the AR. However, because we have the two issues of inter-district transfer and intra-district transfer, we combined those in the exhibit. So you'll see in that first exhibit, E five-one-one-six-point-one-A. Do you see that? You'll see a, a complete list of priorities, and you'll see that as shown on that list.
No, my concern has more to do with how do we notify them, and, and when? For, the irony is that we find out so late that it's, like, now, if Santa Barbara High School is now a program improvement, and, and Dr. Hayden has basically said, that's, that's done, that's over. But of course, the year's already started, and the families who, who are there are probably not going to pull their kids out to change them, to transfer them. And that's structural. We don't find out in time. But, but we don't have anything about when we will notify them and how we will notify them of their, of their rights. And I, I think this is very important, because, because the whole, that's one of the things I agree with about No Child Left Behind, that a parent whose children, or child is in a school that is not performing for, for that child, have the opportunity to send the child to a school that is performing. And that's part of the leverage that is built into that legislation to bring, to get schools to reform and reform more quickly, because they're going to lose enrollments if they don't. So I, to me, I think that ought to be reflected in the, in the administrative regulation. Spell out a little bit more about when and how we tell parents about their rights.
Is that here, or is, is there another board policy?
Right, there is. However, I mean, that doesn't mean we couldn't reference it here. I'd have to, I'll have to look into that, to see exactly how that would be.
But I recognize, I mean, it's asking us, in some sense, to, you know, I mean, we'd rather have them not transfer. I think that there would be a general sentiment for that. But, but, but then again, if we take a perspective of, of what the parent, if the parent knows that they have the opportunity to say, well, I think it's better for my kid not to go to that school, that's something I think a parent ought, ought to have the information to be able to make that, in a timely fashion.
Right, and I mean, you know the rules about sending the letters out, and we have all of those ready to go, and they're being sent. And Mr. Gonzalez has been working.
I forget the rules about the sending letters.
I believe, well, the law says something like the first week of school, but we don't get the data in, in time, correct? Or is it like a week after?
If I can comment, what the law requires is that schools that are already identified for program improvement, we are obligated to send those letters notifying students of choice plus bus transportation prior to the start of school. Galita Valley and Santa Barbara High School that were identified very recently, within a week of their identification, district staff met with both of those principals, provided them a template of that letter, and I believe those letters have already been sent out notifying parents of, one, PI status, and, two, their right to transfer with paid bus transportation.
And the, did you say that Santa Barbara High was included in that?
Correct. We met with Santa Barbara High.
So have they actually sent that letter?
Yes, I believe they have sent that letter. As a matter of fact, we have requested all of our schools to send over these letters, and we will include them in a board brief for you folks, so you can see what these letters look like.
Well, I think that, that the AR ought to reflect what, what Mr. Gonzalez just said. Since it's already what we do, we ought to memorialize that, as the phrase was. Do we have to do it again each year that a school is on, under program improvement?
Correct. Every year that a school moves into program improvement, we're required to send that kind of letter.
So the second time around, it could be more advanced notice?
The, the second time around would be prior to the school year, and on the second time around, it would also include language about supplemental educational services. The third letter would talk about beginning to restructure. The fourth letter talks about structure, restructure, implementation, et cetera.
On, on the second letter and thereafter, do they get it, like, at the time people are pre-registering and enrolling, or?
Dr. Noel, I'd have to check the date. I cannot assure you that it happens during that enrollment period.
That would be very important, it seemed to me, you know, when people are still making their choices. Thank you very much.
Anything else? We have a speaker.
Oh, right. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you again. Under the board policy number six, priorities should be given to students whose parents or guardians is assigned to a school is her primary place of employment for three or more hours a day. I noticed that's priority six. One of the very few benefits that many teachers experience, and I, I don't want to speak for classified, but I guess we think it might apply also there, is that they're able to either have their child at the school there at which they're working, or not have their child at the school at which they're working, whichever works out better for them. And I would encourage you to, if you have the ability, to place that priority higher in that, in that prioritized list. And a reminder, there is the homeschool, and one of the contingencies that was brought forward for the homeschool was that students would be able to come in and take elective classes as part of that high school or junior high activity. And I'm just wondering how that all plays into this transfer policy. I know it's not truly a transfer, but when you have very limited electives out there, and you have school, students who are at that site as, attending that site, then to have space taken from potential elective spaces where other students, I think that needs to maybe be played into this policy, so I would ask you to consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lots of things to look at. Okay, are we ready to move on then? F five. First reading of the revisions to board policy on compensation-related benefits for management confidential employees.
As you know, administrators and confidential employees with at least ten years of, of service to the district have the possibility of health and welfare benefits beyond retirement. We are concerned about the future liability of that cost to the district. And we have proposed language to make a change in that. Making this presentation is Dr. Robertson, who's our Director of Personnel Services.
As part of the fiscal recovery plan, a group of us, a team of us, really looked very hard at all the different areas in which we might potentially have unfunded liability. And there are a couple of them, but this one, the post-retirement unfunded, or the post-retirement benefits is a huge unfunded liability, and has, would have a very significant impact on our budget for years to come. It's proposed that we grandfather the current management and confidential employees who qualify for these benefits. In addition, I've also proposed new language for your consideration that would go into effect for any new management hired after January first, two thousand and nine. The new language proposed, was attached, or should be in your booklet on page two, pretty much takes care of the language changes. Board policy forty-three-fifty, which is the current board policy forty-three-fifty, until we get to the four thousand series. We had the, the first three paragraphs are crossed out, because we no longer have any employees who come under that old designation. They have either all retired and have moved on, and we're taking care of them, but it's, it's just no longer applicable to anybody. The next part, which was actually revised in two thousand, was the lifetime benefits came into play at that time. And again, the language will reflect that we're asking that this be grandfathered, and as effective January first, two thousand and nine, that we that any management confidential employee who's appointed after January first, two thousand and nine, shall qualify for any of the non-management benefits in place for certificated and classified employees. And there is contract language in both CSBA and SBTAs contracts that after a person retires and up to the age of sixty-five pays a thousand dollars. And after that, then it's whatever benefit they might still be, if they were hired prior to nineteen eighty-two, they would get five hundred dollars for life after age sixty-five. We're also getting down to where we won't have too many people who will qualify for that after sixty-five. So unless you can see some other language, some other changes that need to take place, or you have other recommendations, I'm bringing this forward as a first reading. And we'll plan to bring it back at the October board meeting, instead of the September thirtieth one, so that you have some time to look it over and, and make some changes or some recommendations to me to move further. It's hard to determine at this point in time what the cost would be. I was talking with Eric Smith. It was undetermined, but substantial. That's about it.
Well, I, yeah, I just want to say, I think it's a necessary step. And I, it's, well, I mean, I don't want to go into any history here, but it really has to do with creating policy when you're thinking about a single person. And, you know, obviously, policy applies to everyone, so.
Well, I said, currently, I did some numbers for you. We basically have approximately sixty management and confidential employees. And right now, twenty-three of those people already have ten years or more service to the, the district. So with the remaining employees still who fall within that designation, we have a number of years here that we're looking at, but at some point, we just need to go ahead and stop it, so that the liability doesn't continue to keep growing. There will be another area or two potentially that I'm looking at bringing back as well, too, which would also be fairly substantial in terms of unfunded liability. This is the major one that we need to address.
I'm not sure what the direction was. Did you want to wait for the study of management retiree benefits to be completed? Or did you want us to bring this right back?
I'm ready for it.
Yeah, bring it back.
We need to have this come back.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Short. F six, first reading of the revisions to the board policy administrative regs on complaints concerning district employees.
And Mr. Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, will make this presentation.
Thank you. There's actually two aspects to this board. The original board policy, thirteen-twelve-point-five, and its administrative regulation was passed by the board in April two thousand and seven. Since then, there's been revisions to this policy concerning, or labeled complaints concerning district employees. And those revisions, based on CSBA language, are included in the attachments. But the other issue that surfaced is that, based on conversations with CSBA, we believe that this board policy and administrative regulation that was placed in the one thousand series should be more properly placed in the four thousand series under personnel. So that's the twofold request. If you take a look at the board policy, page one of one, the revisions have to do with the second and third paragraph. The second paragraph states, the board prohibits retaliation against complainants. The superintendent or designee may keep a complainant's identity confidential, except to the extent necessary to investigate the complaint. And then the paragraph that follows that is also an addition. That's really the only two revisions that were made to the board policy. The administrative reg is almost, is, is a duplicate of what you've seen. The corrections have to do with the change in title that we're proposing. Please know that in this particular complaint, it outlines a series of steps from a informal to step two, a site-level formal complaint process, to step three, a district-level complaint. And then step four includes an appeal to the board. And so those are the revisions that we're asking you to consider, plus renaming this thirteen-twelve-point-five and moving it to the four thousand series, and renaming it board policy forty, board policy and administrative regulation forty-one, forty-four.
I'm sorry, I just have a question regarding the title. Right now, it says complaints, and then with the strikeout. And I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile to put complaints regarding misapplication of district policies or procedures.
We, we can do anything that the board desires. What we did is simply looked at CSBA language, and that's what we presented to the board.
I, I guess I'm looking at it from, well, of course, I'm looking at it from the perspective of a board member. My concern is that I don't want to lead anyone to believe that the board would hear any kind of personnel complaint. In other words, this has to do solely with the misapplication of policy or procedure, as opposed to a, you know, pure personnel complaint. So I'm wondering if being more explicit in the label would be helpful.
My concern about that, although I like the idea, I like Ms. Harder's idea about specifying, so that it's not, doesn't become a personnel complaint. My concern is that, that the genesis of this was kind of grew out of an, a, a, a lack of policy for how to make, just sort of a just sort of a, an informal complaint against a member of our, an employee, right? You're shaking your head now.
Well, we handled that, and we handled that separately. We have that policy now in place.
Okay, so this is the one regarding, so this, okay, I'm sorry, then I'm speaking to the wrong?
This is our old existing policy, and we wanted to move this.
That's why I wanted to include that clarification, because the board only deals with the superintendent in terms of personnel matters. And otherwise, the superintendent deals with all other personnel matters. And while we may offer advice, well, with regard to collective bargaining, certainly, we take, we, we obviously make decisions. But individual employees, we don't get involved in those personnel issues.
Well, then I think I would concur with your suggestion.
Except for the whistleblower, it says here. Who's that? Well, I guess that's, that's an employee. Yeah, it's going to be an employee speaking to.
I had a couple of questions. In the board policy, second paragraph, board prohibits retaliation against complainants. The superintendent or designee may keep a complainant's identity confidential, except to the extent necessary to investigate the complaint. My question is, why is that a may rather than a shall? And that, then I'll go on to a related point. All matters related to a complaint shall be kept confidential. And any document, communication, or record regarding the complaint shall be placed in a separate file, and shall not be placed in an employee's personnel file. That's a little confusing to me, in, in part, because it doesn't say who, it says all matters. Who's subject to the confidentiality, the complainant, or only the district personnel handling the complaint? Because I, I would wonder whether we would, whether our, we would have a policy that would pertain to the, it's an employee filing a complaint, but would that person be obliged to keep it confidential, or would have the ability to, to go public with it? Normally, you know, the, before yours is an obligation, one kind, the waiver power is in the party of the complainant's power, I would think. But I, but it's not clear to me.
I would share with you that, given those two comments, we would take this back to council and have them address the issue of may and shall, and exactly who the confidentiality applies to.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No, we are at the end of our meeting. Any, we do not need to return to consent agenda items, coming events we've already heard about. Board comments, correspondence. Future agenda items, we do have a meeting next week, starting at 7:00.
We have a meeting next week, and, and the feature agenda item is the board policy 5000 series.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure that, since a number of board members kept their documents, and Mimi, do you have a good idea of who has their documents? Let's check with Bob, though. Bob, did you keep your documents for the 5000 series, or do you need a new set?
I probably don't have.
Okay, okay, good.
My filing system broke down.
Okay.
And we may have a closed session at the end.
We may have closed session at the end on negotiations, but we would not start the meeting until 7:00.
May I ask that we have a little extra time in closed session about negotiation?
Sounds like a?
And if we cut through that 5000 series in record time?
Could I also request that closed session be time certain, and whatever open session agenda items we have not gotten to, that they be postponed to another meeting, so that?
No, we're going to get through it fast, but yes, we will do that.
Okay.
We'd better just start with that 5000 series, shouldn't we?
Now we've got a few other things. All right, anything else?
Well, yes, for, for future agenda items, and I'm just curious, this may already have planned, but at some point, we'll be talking, I'm assuming, about the Algebra I directive from the state.
Oh, yes.
And I would love for us to talk about that, have our initial conversation, and see what's already going on in eighth grade algebra. So.
Okay, anything else?